Call the meeting to order. And if you would please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic
which it stands.
Which it stands. One nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. And this is a special budget retreat. And if the clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Shrubnik. Your council member file.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember O'Kane.
Here.
All right. Next item is the approval of the agenda. If there are no changes, the agenda will stand approved as written. Thank you all for coming here. I think we have a few people in attendance that are not speaking. I certainly thank them from taking time out on this Thursday evening to join us for this meeting. And I'd like to take the opportunity now to turn this meter or meeting over to our facilitator. And the gentleman has been working with the with the Sustainability Commission, Mr. Jim Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. As I said to all of you in an email yesterday, I'm delighted to be here. It was a great privilege and pleasure to work with the members of the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force. I think you have a very interesting agenda in front of you tonight. If everybody in your community is as dedicated and as talented as the six people who served on this task force, you're in really good shape. So, thank you very much for having me here tonight. I wanted to just quickly go through the agenda and then allocate some time for public comment. And I see that there are about 10 people here tonight. But very quickly, our goals are for you all to reach agreement on whether or not you want to add one or two proposed goals to your list of priorities. Another major goal of the evening is to update you on the Financial Sustainability Plan. And that would include hearing from Steve Toller of Management Partners, the consulting firm who did the basic analysis of your financial future and offers recommendations tonight. And then we'll also hear from two members, if not even more, from the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force, who will present you their recommendations and how they got there. And of course, you'll have the opportunity to ask questions of both Steve and the task force members.
Point of order.
Yes.
On the agenda, council comment, I mean, the citizen comments is not listed. And we often do not have citizen comments when we have special retreats like this. So it's not part of our agenda.
Councilmember Curtis, it is. If you take a look at the agenda, you will see set 5A. That says agenda item. If you open that up, it's sort of agenda inside of an agenda. Citizen comments are there.
Oh. Hadn't seen that before. Thank you.
I hadn't seen it either. I found that out from my, our fearless city manager. So anyway, there are council, there are citizen comments.
So if that's okay with, we'll launch into that in just a moment. And I'll lay out a couple of ground rules for that.
So that is a good point for all those who are following along. Please click on that agenda link inside the main agenda to see the full agenda for the retreat. So I know that's a little confusing. We've done it with some retreats in the past, but there's quite a detailed retreat agenda within the special meeting agenda. So make sure you click on that to follow along.
Just to continue this high level overview of the agenda, because as we get to each session, we'll talk a bit more about how it's going to proceed. But basically, the main part of this meeting from seven o'clock till about eight forty-five is the Financial Sustainability Plan, the process, Steve told his recommendations and those from the task force. Also, I think that Rob will want to work with you on next steps in the budget process. And then we'll end up with some final reflections of the evening from any or all of you. So that is the agenda for tonight. I hope you all do now have that more detailed agenda. But you can leave it to me to kind of manage this. So I want to use the ground rules tonight that apparently you've become accustomed to using, at least in your annual strategic planning retreats. I'm not going to go over all of them because they're about 10 or 11. I just wanted to say that Rob tells me that you've become quite proficient using Zoom. I don't know that you need to raise your hands or hit the little raise hand button. I want this conversation to be free flowing. That's one of the great benefits of a retreat. I will step in to kind of help manage it, to kind of monitor if there's equal opportunity for people to speak. But I don't want to get in the way of your free flowing conversation. And so I'll use a subtle touch tonight. So with that, we do then, we had called for some public comment in the more detailed retreat. And looking at, we do have 12 guests tonight. And wondering, Teela, I might need your help here. We had allocated three minutes per comment and asked people to make sure that they focus their comments on the issues at hand tonight. But I'm wondering first, if we could look at how many people out of the 12 of you, our guests, want to speak this evening?
So it looks like we had one person raise their hand. It's an actual button through Zoom. So if if anyone else is interested, now would be the time.
Just to get a sense of like, if we had 10 people say they wanted to speak, we might try to reduce it a little bit from three minutes to something less.
It looks like just one person.
Okay. And who is?
It looks like Richard Osborne.
Okay, Mr. Osborne, do you want to take three minutes then?
Right, so he's rejoining.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
So I'm going to share a timer on the screen, so.
I think I'll be three minutes. So I wanted, this is the first time I've ever been to one of the council meetings. Normally, I read your stuff. I know most people probably don't even look at it in their mail. But what really caught my eye was the red light cameras. And I just wanted, I wrote this out so I can kind of go through it quickly. First of all, Lisa, I'm glad you're being honest about doing it for the money, not some vague safety issue. I think it's already been shown not to be a significant improvement in safety. In all my years, I've been caught by a red light camera only once, this spring. The infraction, making a red turn at a red light without making a full stop first. The only evidence was a still shot on my card making the turn. You couldn't tell anything from the picture. But here's the thing, I wasn't going to fight it. I paid the eighty to a hundred dollars because I can and because it wasn't worth my time. That's what's going to happen. People who are well off are just going to pay it. People who are not well off are going to be put in a terrible situation. This is a tax that's about as regressive as it can be. It's not a big deal to me, but it sure is to the guys who work at the Taco Time or the Jiffy Lube on the corner of 68th and Botha Way, which I'm guessing is where he'll put it, or worse, those who've lost their job during this pandemic. We don't need to be punishing those who are worse off. I'm not a big fan of taxes, but at least taxes raise money on people based on how successful you are. I'd rather pay the extra hundred dollars a year from property or another tax than see it applied to people where the money is a much bigger issue. The ticket I got came months after the occurrence. I'm lucky that it didn't get lost in the mail or junk mail. I've seen horrendous fees added to these things if you don't reply right away, including not being able to get a new license till all fees are paid. Again, it's a terrible fee to start. It gets worse if you're not in possession to deal with it immediately, or honestly, if you just don't even see it. A number of cities have taken to shortening the time the yellow light is on to increase revenue. That certainly decreases safety, and yet it happens to raise more money. It's a terrible slippery slope. Once it's in place, it's something that's really hard to get rid of. And, you know, please don't tell me if you don't want to pay the ticket, don't break the law. Because I challenge every council member here to tell me they've never felt screwed because they misjudged a yellow light and seen it go red as you go through. This this time, the camera is always is always watching. This proposal is almost universally hated. Heck, the mayor of Miami was voted out by a candidate whose main platform was just to get rid of red light cameras. I'm sure not many people even noticed what, when it came out. But when you'll find out is as soon as it goes up, which will be too late because you will already have entered into multi-year contract with some company in Arizona. So I'd really like to go on record as saying this is something that you should reconsider. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Jasmin. Thank you for being here tonight. Teela, is anybody else now wanting to speak?
I don't see any more hands raised.
Okay. Well, thank you again for everybody who is here tonight to listen to the council's deliberations. And with that, I'm going to go to the next item on the agenda, which we will be talking about the review of your council priorities. And as it says here on the agenda, first, I think Rob's going to give you a status report on progress. But the suggestion has been made to add two priorities. One is related to the pandemic response and the other is to relate to diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I think the question is, would you want to add one or both to your listed priorities? I read Rob's memo and I note that there's the one option too for the DEI priority, the possibility of perhaps revising number eight and moving that up. But that's all I'm going to say to set the stage and I hand it over to Rob. You're muted.
Yes. All right, thanks, Jim, and it's good to see you all here tonight. Yeah, if I could share my screen, I'd like to show the memo about council on progress on council goals. And we're actually calling them priorities now. And just general update on our work plan. So first of all, I just want to talk about two big unplanned things that happened this year. One was responding to the pandemic and one, the other one was responding to the outcry and all that happened with the systemic racism issues and the murder of George Floyd. So the first one responding to the pandemic, hopefully you can see my screen. And I won't read all this verbatim. Hopefully you've all had a chance to read it. But, you know, the pandemic continues to go on. It did not subside during the summer like some thought it would. And it continues to put a stress and strain on our economy and on the, you know, just our residents and organizations throughout the city. Our organization here at the city has been relatively safe. None of our city employees have tested positive for the virus, which is good. We unfortunately have seen nine deaths in the city of Kenmore from the virus. But hospitalized cases are way down and so are positive cases compared to last March. That said, we need to stand our guard and make sure we, as we as a community, do our part to to hold down the curve of the virus. When we, when the pandemic was unfolding, we, as an organization, created a purpose statement and some objectives to go with responding to the pandemic. And you can see these here on your screen. And as a city team, we mobilized quickly and met often and scrambled resources to. We predicted significant drops in certain revenues. And it's still early, but it's not looking like those significant drops are going to be happening as pessimistically as we had forecasted. Sales tax is not down as much as we thought. We thought sales tax at the time would be down 25%. It's more down in the single digits, which is good. Gas tax, we thought, would be off by about 50% with the traffic down and everything. It's more down like 13%. Permit fees are actually about where they were last year at this time. And our permitting folks are pretty busy and it's challenging for them because they have to work from home. So I'm really pleased with how my coworkers have kept things up and running, especially with all the limitations and precautions we have to take. That we definitely had to reduce some city services because of the pandemic. But overall, hopefully, in most cases, our citizens aren't feeling too much of a difference when it comes to city services. And we're still in Phase Two of the Governor's Safe Start Washington phased reopening plan. And I don't know when we'll be going from Phase Two to Phase Three. But for now, City Hall and Senior Center remain closed, although we are answering the city's main phone line Monday through Thursday, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. It says noon here in the memo. It's actually till 2 p.m. That's a typo on my part. We're actually answering the phones until 2 p.m. Then if and when Phase Three happens, actually, I shouldn't say if, when Phase Three happens, we'll be ready to open City Hall a little bit more. And even some of our ball fields and other things will be able to open up a bit more. But this pandemic continues to be a major workload item because of all the things we still have to do during the pandemic. And my coworkers are figuring out a way to do their regular day jobs and also respond to this pandemic. Like this last paragraph here, it says our pre-pandemic workload has not gone away. Yet it's still more difficult to perform in many instances. And one example is reviewing plans and permits. It's just a way slower process if you're trying to do it from home. But that said, our permit revenue is still strong. And the last sentence here says still less compared to your date last year. That was as of the writing, as of the writing of this memo. But actually, I just got a report today saying that we're about on par with last year. The other thing that really emerged this year was the response to systemic racism. You know, and we saw major upheaval and public outcry in the wake of the murder of George Floyd. And you, as a city council, really stepped up and showed leadership early on. You directed us to do the Obama Foundation's Mayor Pledge, which included the listening sessions. And we also had a council discussion with our chief of police and the King County Sheriff and some, and citizen input during that meeting as well. And we're taking, we've taken all the input from everybody, including emails and the listening sessions, and compiled it into to a report. And that's going to be presented to you, the city council, this Monday, this coming Monday, the 14th. But that has also launched another initiative, which is the need for a diversity, equity, and inclusion policy and program. And we need that now more than ever. And in my conversations with you, I think you agree. And we're proposing to come up with a path forward on how to have such a program. And we'll be talking about that on the 14th as well. I've actually asked Farnell Miller to jump in right now at this point. Farnell Miller is a member of our Financial Sustainability Plan Task Force. And she's offered a lot of insight on this to the task force. And if you don't mind, I'd like her to say a few words about this and have her perspective offered to the city council, if that's okay.
That would be wonderful. But could you please tell me what percent the gas taxes off you broke up during that?
Oh, 13%.
Thank you.
We pessimistically thought it would be 50%. It's off 13%. And it's, we got about a half million a year in revenue from gas tax. So 13% off of half a million. Farnell, are you there?
I am. Hi, everyone. And again, thank you for having me and in the space and just including my voice. As I say always, I'm not the expert or only voice, but I appreciate being included. And I always ask when folks start to talk about diversity, inclusion, and equity is, if you're going to start including, then you need to acknowledge who's been excluded. And that's always the foundation to start. So I appreciate the listening sessions and community involvement. I've been doing that all around kind of our state this year and appreciated listening and being involved in other communities as they begin this work as well. And so I always just ask, you know, what your goals are, what the needs are, what your readiness is, and what capacity. Because equity should be on your calendar every day, should be in your budget in every way. That's one of the reasons why I agreed to be on the task force is just to bring my lens to the table. As I, if you remember, I wanted to go around and introduce and hear what lens each person was bringing to the table and make sure that there's ways for all of us to be heard in the community, which is what your budget tool or balance tool was, is an attempt to get everybody's voice in the community. And I also brought to the table the equity tool. Korean and I have worked on committees together before where we've brought that list of questions to the table to not just ask who's in attendance, but who's been excluded? Whose voice isn't here? Whose experience are we taking into account? And it's not an extra thing to do or job. It's just that it's so automatic that you have not taken that in account. Then you just have to make sure that you have those questions, those folks, the voices, so you can remember to do what's against your, you know, all of our biases is what's not so automatic. And so I hope that your council, when you go to retreat or look at those goals that you remember, three areas, which is first, your own personal work on bias. So then that's how you walk through the world and what your experience includes and does not include. And then that's how you affect your community. Who do you bump up against? Who do you serve? And if you are, you know, well, you are, not if, but you are serving the public, then it should be all and not just those who whose experience is like yours. And so reaching out to all is needed. That's what inclusion is about. And then the systems that, you know, our community operates and how to dismantle and reassess, make assessments. So then you can be, you can always practice inclusion. And it's not an extra burden to do on top of work that you do. It's, it's only seen that way because you've, you've not been in the practice of doing that. And so basically, I'm just, anywhere I go, I just look for, do folks know what equity is? It's not, you know, we've talked about equality all our lives, but we don't talk about equity, which is a simple, simple as a yes and. And that should be in all of your policies is yes. I talk about this with my students and I say, yes, it'd be nice for everybody to have, you know, a coat for this outdoor activity. So yes, everybody is going to get a coat and the coat should fit you and have the accessories that you need, a hood, a button, a tie, a zip, or however it works for you and your need. Yes, and. So it's a simplistic way to look at that. And also, it's all, all parts of me get to be included, not just the parts that make you comfortable or that you like or that I feel comfortable. And always, not just sometimes, but all the time, not just when majority population allows me to. It's an always policy, all of me, always, and everywhere I go. Because that's what dominant and norm, you know, this society gets to do all the time. And those of us who've been marginalized do not, do not get to have that preface to start from. It's always waiting to be included, waiting and or be invited or having to go through so many steps or gatekeeping to get there. So I hope that your policies can remove those gates, those barriers, and just open that inclusion to yes and all always and everywhere, all the time. That's basically what I look for. So thank you for letting me speak that into the room and record. And I know lots of companies, including myself, who do that work and would be happy to assist you in that, so.
Thanks for now. Really appreciate that perspective and thanks for adding that. Before I go into the other council goals, and also, I hope you also know that on Monday night, we'll also be talking about, you'll be giving me direction on a diversity, equity, inclusion path forward. And we'll also be getting that report from the chief of police on the use of force report as well. So we will definitely have more to discuss on this topic on Monday night. But before I jump to the other council goals and then give you an update on that, any thoughts or reactions so far?
Thoughts on the overview of adding things to the priority list? Or are you talking about something else specific?
Just so far, I've talked about two things, the pandemic and the systemic racism slash diversity, equity, inclusion. And so just any questions about that before I give you updates on the other council goals?
I actually do have some thoughts at the high, high level. Not related to these two specifically. I have two concerns. One, we haven't done this in the past. So when we had the two teenagers that died in traffic accidents, we did a huge amount of work. We had citizen task force. We implemented a lot of different, you know, education and engineering solutions. But we didn't change our goals. They were goals at the time. We waited till it was time for in-cycle and then we added it and we increased the priority significantly. So we didn't ignore it. Go ahead, Rob.
I actually remember something differently. So it was in March when those two young people died within one week of each other. And we actually had a June retreat where you did in June move the council goal, create pedestrian bicycle safety as council goal number one in June of that same year. That's what I remember. I could be wrong.
I may well have forgotten it. My other concern was, so when we did that, did we prioritize it with the paired comparison? So it gets a kind of a fair trial? And so if we just go start adding things, and I don't care what the topic is, it feels like it's not being compared to everything else with the same weight in the same manner that we do at our usual full retreat.
Yeah, I've thought about that. And I was going to get to this a little bit later, but I'll just bring up the idea now. Yeah, because of lack of time tonight, you're not going to be able to do the paired comparison exercise that you do normally. But I do want these two, I'm recommending that these two major workload items get recognized formally in some way. And my recommendation is for you just to put the two, you know, the pandemic and systemic racism, just put them at the top of the goals without numbers, just maybe even like bullets, just recognizing that they happened this year. And then at your annual retreat in January, then you can actually go through the paired comparison and prioritize them. But I'm, I'm just looking for some formal recognition that, hey, these are two major things that we all recognize are big priorities and they should be acknowledged somewhere on your priority sheet, even if you don't necessarily number them.
Councilmember Phyllos, her hand up.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Ms. Farnell Miller. I really appreciate what you had to offer and share today. And I thank you, Mr. Curtis, for your additional questions to clarify your concerns. I'm comfortable adding these to our, the top of our list. The pandemic is going to impact all areas of life in our community, surrounding community, how we move through it and how we do our work. Diversity and equity is and inclusion work. As I've said in the past, should never be an item on a list that you selectively usually do or not do. It's the lens that you do your work through. And I know that our city manager has met with surrounding cities and is very aware of how their progress on this work has gone and under this last decade. And it's time for and, and under this last desk decade. And, uh, it's time for us to, to really step up. It's time for us to look at the work that we do with, uh, an equitable lens and be able to, um, help bring our community with us through this work. And I know that, um, some are concerned about losing priority. I don't think we should be looking at this as a priority rather than, this is something that our city should have been working on, um, in the past and is going to do so. And I'd like to support that work. Um, because that's really the quality of life we want to bring to our, our community is recognizing everyone and including everyone and looking how we impact, uh, people's lives through the work we do and acknowledge those differences and how to close opportunity back, perhaps that persists. So I suggest that we, we add these to the top of our list and as bullet points. And we, we figure it out as we go. So thank you.
How did the rest of you feel? Um, Deputy May Herbert?
Yeah, I, I agree with, um, the city manager's, um, uh, suggestion, um, to not have these listed somewhere on the priority list, uh, for the year would be unfair to him when we evaluate, uh, him at the end of the year as well as the staff, uh, because regardless if this is on the list or not, these are things that a significant amount of staff time is being put towards with council support. Um, and I think we need to recognize that in the, in the priorities. Um, I also want to second what council member File said too. These are things that we should have been doing, um, for a while now. And, uh, I'm kind of sad that it took, um, what it took for us to, um, kind of jump to action. But I'm glad that we're moving and recognizing where our biases may be and where our, uh, blind spots could be and proactively trying to address those. So I support adding them and then, yeah, deal with the pair comparison in January.
Um, Mayor Baker has his hand raised.
Okay, Mayor Baker.
Oh, you're muted.
I definitely agree that this needs to be on the list. We have devoted a lot of staff time and rightly so to this. However, we spent a lot of time prioritizing things that were important to the community. And amongst them is pedestrian safety and generally safety in our community. And I think automatically put two in front of these, even though their bullets are at the top of the list now, I think they should be on the list, but I don't think they should necessarily be on the top of the list. I think staff is going to work on them as much as they need to, but we have an evaluation coming up in about 30 days. And I, I just believe that it should be there. It should be on the list, but the top of the list, no.
Would you, Mayor Baker, just thinking about, um, taking this a bit further, would you just put them at the bottom? And then again, when you get to the comparison later, I guess that would be in January, or are you thinking?
Yeah, I know from past experience, the staff is going to devote as much time to this as they, as they have to. And I know this is extremely important for the city right now, but so are other things. And I would, I would hate to see other things sacrificed. Um, and I, I just think that they need to be on the list, but I don't think they have to be bullet points at the top because that automatically gives more weight to them when it comes to evaluations and everything else. And I certainly don't want to see that enter into it. I don't want to see that weighted in an evaluation. I want to see the evaluation for merit's sake. And certainly devoting enough staff time and effort to these two items is extremely important and it's going to be weighted anyway. So I just don't think they need to be number one and number two. We want a lot of time sorting that list out and what is important to this community. And I agree, these have to be dealt with and they are very important, but I don't think they should be number one and number two on the list.
Councilmember Shrevnik, I saw your hand first and then Councilmember Kane?
Yeah, I was going in the same direction as Mayor Baker and my thoughts that, yes, I, I think they should both be bullet points and maybe just list them at the bottom under a, you know, a header that says significant unanticipated workload items. Um, and then we understand why they, you know, because we evaluate the work based on the priorities. And if we have major things that come into play that we didn't anticipate, they need to be factored into the evaluation.
Thank you. And Councilmember Kane?
I, I, I had a, I had a similar comment. Um, and for me, I, I could see where, I, I think qualifying why we are adding the bullets. And I think the events of this year have been large enough or significant enough that I'd be comfortable with them at the top. With a qualifying statement, given unforeseen circumstances, we must acknowledge the impacts on our city of the pandemic and our, uh, much needed, um, work on diversity and equity in the city of Kenmore. Um, whether it's at the top or the bottom, I, I, I think it's important to include it. And I think it's very important to have a clear statement of why. I think both items are in high priorities. I also agree that it's not time to be waiting them right now because we, that, that, that should take place at the retreat. But including those, these events is important, especially, um, recognizing the impact on the work that, um, our city manager has been, you know, performing on behalf of both of those topics.
Uh, thank you. You've built on councilmember Shrevnik's ideas and expanded them. So councilmember Marshall?
Thank you. I'd, I include them both in the priorities, of course, and I'd put them at the highest priority, given their most immediate impact. I think it's appropriate to do so, uh, given the circumstances. Thank you.
Okay. Well, it sounds like the great majority of you want to add them. And both councilmember Shrevnik and O'Kane are trying to add the kind of significance and put in some explanation of why they would be added. But then there's a little bit of, I think, different positions in terms of, do they go at the top or do they go at the bottom? But you all seem to like Rob's idea of just having them for now as bullet points.
Um, can I put them in the middle?
Yes, of course.
There's, my rationale there is, you know, um, the top five are the most important and those are the ones you evaluate me on. And I could put them right after the top five and then the rest would follow. And they, and they wouldn't be numbered. They'd just be bullets.
I like that compromise.
Yeah, yeah, I do too. That's a great one. Thank you.
Everybody else?
I, I stand by my original position of prioritizing them as, uh, the top. Uh, and, um, I, I don't think that the, the evaluation is, is so much the, the concern. I think our city manager has done an amazing job of responding and stepping up in this, in the first global pandemic of this horrific impact we've had in a hundred years. But anyway, I stand by my original position.
So you prefer that. Um, Councilmember Kane?
Um, I, I, I appreciate, um, our city manager's, um, diplomatic solution. I, I lean towards, um, councilmember Marshall's suggestion of having a top. I, I really do think what we're experiencing this year is exceptional. And just drawing the statement at the top that this is impacting how we're handling our priorities, um, makes, makes sense to me. Um, I think there, it's important to include them no matter, regardless of where. But I, I lean towards having, if we're going to have a statement at the top, I, I, is my preference.
And I'm, and I'm, you know, one of the holdouts. So I'm, I'm fine with it at the top as long as there's a rationale, like, uh, councilmember O'Kane discussed.
So for those of you who are saying at the bottom or even in the middle, can you live with it at the top? If we took some of the language that both councilmembers Shrevnik and O'Kane articulated a few minutes ago about just being significant because it was not expected, they were unanticipated, but the city must acknowledge that they are taking up so much of the work plan of the staff and are consuming, you could even say, the time and the energy or attention of the public? I would vote no. I would prefer them after the first five things that we've already told the city manager to work on this year.
I would vote yes. And, um, I would qualify that with, uh, in the future, I know that we have a lot of work as council to do with our own education here. Um, and that creates awareness where diversity and equity comes in our work we do. And so while I'm hearing that we need to have this as, um, you know, exceptional this year, diversity and equity work is never an exceptional item. It isn't always item. And, uh, it's not just an opinion, but there are of my own, uh, but rather a great large of governmental area of local agencies that also agree with that. Um, my heart breaks a little bit, uh, but I mean, this is just room where we can grow together. So qualifiers where the city is doing doesn't impact with COVID, doesn't impact all of their work, uh, let alone our community. And the disparities that are increasing within our community. So I'm comfortable if we, we add those at the top with a qualifier and move along.
Yeah, just turn to your city manager. I saw his hand up first.
Well, what I suggest is, um, how about if I finish the review of the top five council goals memo? And then I'll pull, then I'll pull up your, the full list of your council goals. And then maybe you can just take a vote at, when I do that. But okay, if I go move forward and just finish my review on progress?
And give us a little bit of a respite in the discussion of people think about this and then your idea about pulling them up thinks a good one.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to go ahead and have so many screens. Okay, let's see here. All right. Is that the right one? Yes. Okay. Okay, so, um, moving on to the, the five that you originally created, uh, last January, target zero, um, continues to be your number one priority. And it has been since 2014. And we have made so much progress on this goal. And it's so fun to look back and see that. And the numbers are showing it too. Um, our pedestrian and bicycle serious deaths or serious accidents and deaths are noticeably down. Um, now there were small numbers to begin with, but we're still seeing a difference. And I think it's, uh, largely due to your leadership on this. Um, so I won't go into all these details, but here's some additional things we're doing pedestrian and bicycle safety. Even something as a, simple as an overlay on a road can actually improve pedestrian and bicycle safety. Why? Because then that's an opportunity to re-stripe the road. And then on Simons in particular, we got rid of a pet peeve of mine. And that's what I call freeway off ramps. Uh, we got rid of the freeway off ramps on Simons. So you can no longer take a right turn at 35 miles an hour on Simons. You actually have to slow down and take a right, right angle turn, just like you have to do on other streets. And, and by doing that, we also shortened the crossing distance for pedestrians. And we created new bike lanes. And so the full length of Simons now from city limit all the way to, uh, Wanty to Drive, um, has, uh, bike lanes on it, which is cool. And it, that had a lot to do with just paint. So paint can do a lot of great things for pedestrian bicycle safety. Um, on affordable housing, look at this list of things you've accomplished and things you are working on. Uh, the mobile home park preservation, the ADUs, you'll be taking hopefully final action this Monday night on that. Missing middle work that's coming up, um, the multifamily tax exemption, how you expanded that to the TOD, uh, to provide more incentives for affordable housing there. Rent notification regulations that you enacted, um, the taking advantage of the local sales tax. That was a new law that came into place that allowed us to capture state, a piece of the state share of sales tax. Um, and you can, you can just see the, uh, the great things that, look at this, this goes on and on. Makes me feel really good about the things you are leading us on. So thank you. Um, your council goal number three is climate action plan. And, um, back last summer, I guess it was July 13th council meeting, uh, we gave you a plan for a plan, a plan on how to move forward on a climate action plan. And you authorized us to get moving on that, including phase one of a climate action plan, which is greenhouse gas inventory and calculations. And that's moving along nicely. Uh, Richard Sawyer, our environmental services manager, and Adam Nebbenzahl, our graduate intern, are keeping that moving, uh, moving along nicely. Um, and then you also, part of that greenhouse gas inventory was, is a consulting contract with Cascadia that you authorized as well. Um, and then we'll need to, uh, talk about additional resources to continue with the next phases of the climate action plan during the budget process. Um, walkways and waterways, we're making progress. We're on schedule, just like we told the folks in the, our, our voters in the 2016 walkways and waterways bond measure. Bad news that the projects are costing a lot more than we anticipated back in 2016. But the corresponding good news is that my amazing coworkers have found additional funds through grants and other resources without having to go back to the voters for more money or to cut the project significantly. So that's, that's great news. Um, Squires Landing Park is the only one that's not fully funded. Uh, it's, I think about several, several hundred thousand dollars are still needed to fully fund that project. But we still have time. Construction isn't anticipated until 2022. And, and we have some sources of funding that we can, or in the meantime, to close that gap. So, and you know, you can see where we're at the progress on all the projects. Wanty to Drive is under, under contract and going well. Um, we're going to be going out to bid on the 68th Avenue project here next month. And, um, yeah, so we're, we are going to be a different city when walkways and waterways is finished. It's going to be, be awesome. And then, um, and then councilable number five, um, financial sustainability plan. The, the task force has done what they set out to do, even though they had to take a hiatus during this pandemic. They came back in August, picked up where they left off and just nailed it. They did a great job figuring out the different sources and ways to cut and had awesome discussion. And they brought a level of sophistication and yet simplicity all at the same time that really made for a great discussion. You'll hear more about that tonight. And just last but not least, I'm just thrilled to be working for this organization. Uh, we so appreciate your support, your vision, your leadership. And it's a thrill to be part of this and to be, we're making progress on your priorities. So with that, I can show the list of council goals and then you can decide whether to put those bullets or where to put the bullets.
First, I just wanted to ask though, do any of you have any questions or of clarification or any reactions to the five that Rob just highlighted for you? I'm not seeing anybody saying they do, so.
Yeah. So hopefully, you know, you can see, hopefully, on my screen, I can see all 11. Can you see all 11?
I can.
You need it to be bigger, smaller?
Can you see it? Okay, everybody?
Okay.
Well, as we turn our focus again to this issue, I will just say, you know, I heard a lot of agreement among you. It sounds like you all are in favor of adding these two as priorities. You all seem to be in favor of adding them as bullets, not as numbers. Taking up on the suggestions from councilor Shrevnik and O'Kane, it sounds like you would want kind of an explanation of why these two are significant. Um, and it does sound like you're all pretty much interested in someday, I guess next January at your retreat, having the opportunity to ultimately compare them and, uh, rank them according to those two and the others. So it seems like there's a lot of agreement here, just right at the moment, you have some different positions in terms of whether you put them at the top or at the bottom or after the top five. And I think maybe just to remind you too, that for now, when she was talking, talked about how they might be all, that especially DEI would be integrated into many of the things you do. So maybe someday, like in January, you'll find that, um, there are ways to integrate it into all of these, but that's for the future, just to kind of give you that vision of, uh, a discussion you might have someday. So what is the, uh, is there a consensus among you or? So what is the, is there a consensus among you or?
I have a process question. Do we need to take a vote? Like, are we waiting for a motion or I'm just not sure what we're doing?
Yeah, that's a good question. Whatever you, however you do it tonight, I will bring this back to another city council meeting agenda with the language and everything. So you'll be able to actually see what you're voting on. But if you want to take a vote on whether to put it at the top, bottom or middle, that might be helpful. But just know that you will see it and vote on it formally at a future council meeting.
Should we take a poll on the three options at the moment?
Sure.
Because when I looked at it, I think there are people who support each option. So how many are in favor of putting it at the top? I might have to have you physically raise your hand so I can see you. Looks like four of you.
Well, that's it. There's no sense going any further. That's the majority.
Okay. Okay. So again, it'll be put at the top with all of the things that I just said that I think you had agreed on before. Bullets, not numbers, explanation of their significance. And then ultimately too, we'll put this into the retreat notes that you want some opportunity to compare them in the way you have done before, which sounds pretty systematic.
Okay.
Any other comments about this at all? Because otherwise we'll move on. Okay, we're actually running ahead of time. And with that, we are going to go into the review of the priority based budgeting. And again, I'm going to turn this to Rob and Joanne Gregory. Our purpose here is to give you a sense of what progress has been made. What are the findings from some of the results? And I think you would have seen Joanne's work too, to give you that before we got here tonight. So walk you through that. Then we'll take questions and comments, reactions.
Yeah, well, before Joanne gives you more detail, just, we have been using priority based budgeting as a lens through which to look at our budget since I believe about 2014. And it's a way to score, number one, to break out our, the things we do into programs rather than line items. So line items are things like supplies and equipment and professional services and rent. And you know, those things, rather than looking at the budget that way, priority based budgeting looks at it in a programmatic way where we put everything in we do into a program. And then we actually cost those programs, including staff time. So we take our hourly rate with benefits and salary and everything. And we track our time and how we spend our time. And, and then the, the programs we spend our time on and spend other resources on are identified, costed. And then they're scored based on the citywide results that you as a council update annually. So we just want to remind you of that program and how it is a lens through which we view the budget. It's not the be all end all lens. And it's not the only lens through which we look at the budget. But it is, it is a way to look at the budget and see how different programs score and how they meet your priorities. So Joanne.
Okay, there, I'm unmuted. Well, should we show the results of the process that you just described? See if I can pull, pull it up on the screen. I've got, I'm like you, I have so many screens open right now. I will share my screen with the memo that we wrote to you in February when we completed what we thought was the initial phase of the priority based budgeting process. Are you seeing the memo?
We are, Joanne.
This is a memo we prepared because we wanted the financial sustainability task force to understand this process also. In that we had been using it for a number of years and that the city council had adopted results that they wanted for the community, which would illustrate how we utilize the resources that we have to accomplish the results that folks want for our community. And utilizing that process that that Rob just described, we internally scored the programs. And then we had a citizen engagement piece where we mixed up staff and some council members and some community members and went through the different programs and rated them according to how well they achieved these various results. And also looking at factors such as are they mandated or not? Is there a cost recovery element to them? And that kind of thing. So all of that then resulted in a scoring by all the programs we had identified into four quartiles. And I'm going to, I'm going to jump right to the chart first if I can find it. Here it is. It showed that of our city budget that we ran through this process, how much of our resources were achieving programs in quartile one, which were the, the programs that best achieved the results that we felt the community wanted. And then how much of our resources were spent in quartile two, which again is a really important place to focus your, your resources and so on and so forth. With quartile four being the programs that probably least addressed or satisfied the results for the community. So you can see that we don't have a great deal of our resources invested in those types of programs. And we're doing, I think, quite a good job of making sure that we have most of our resources in quartile one and quartile two programs. And then further down, and this was in the packet, it's a lot of detail. We list specifically all the programs we had identified throughout this process, the dollars that were associated with those, whether they are personnel costs or direct costs and what quartile they landed in, based on all of the scoring and vetting and reviewing that we did over time. So I wanted to know if there were any questions about these, if you've had a chance to look at those.
If I could just jump in really quick before questions. So when we got started on this a few years ago, we, we actually had about, we actually identified close to 400 programs, if I'm not mistaken. But as we've gotten better at this, we kind of found out that a lot of our programs we had identified were just way too granular. And so since then, we've kind of condensed and brought some programs in together and things. And so we're, we're down to only 176 programs now. So we haven't reduced what we do. We just decided to make some programs less granular. But my 40, 40ish coworkers that I have, we seem to get 176 programs done. So I think that's kind of interesting.
Well, one of the reasons also for the decline in the number is that when we first started doing this, there were, we discovered that a lot of departments share in achieving certain programs. And we were all counting that as a program for us. So you might have had seven programs that responded to customer service, customer service inquiries. And it really didn't make sense to count that seven times. So as we got better at going through this process, we realized, well, that should be one program across the organization that we all contribute to and that reflects the cost of providing that organizationally. Our next, you know, and we finished, we finished the, we got to this phase right before the pandemic. And some of our next steps were going to be looking at some of the, the programs, particularly maybe the quartile three and four, and digging into those details and reassessing if it made sense that we were allocating as many resources to them. Was there maybe a different way to achieve that program or offer that service? And we sort of stalled with the pandemic coming on board. We shared it with the financial sustainability task force. But after that point, we did not find an ability to carry, to carry it forward until now. But we hope that, my hope is that understanding the, the results and understanding the programs and where they fall out, it will help us inform what we do going into the next biennium. It'll help you evaluate what is really important, what is the best use of your resources. I also think that anything new as far as programs or functions or goals or strategies should be looked at in light of the priorities and the way that we score these programs too. Before we, and I'm not speaking about any program in particular, but every, every new program consumes resources. So if this is a finite amount of resource, what gives in what we're already doing? And how does it stack up based on the results for the community, based on the demand for that service, the mandate for that service, et cetera? So we hope at least in that regard, this effort will still be considered as we look at next year's budget.
Are you ready for questions now, Joanne?
Oh, I am certainly.
Many council members have questions, reactions, comments about the city's use of the priority based budgeting and some of the results that you saw just a moment ago in front of you. And I can see everyone but the mayor. And I think that's because he was being polite and had both his audio and video off. But I can see all the other council members too. So, Rob, sir.
Nope, I'm here.
Oh, hi, okay.
I'm right here.
Here he is.
If, if councils don't have any questions, just one, one illustration of a program. And to, to make Joanne's point about how everything has a cost, especially when you view it through this lens. I remember a few years ago, the city council wanted to do the drug take back program where people could take their pharmaceutical drugs and drop them off at City Hall. The box free and there's a program where the disposing of the pharmaceuticals was free and so was all free. But we used, we use priority based budgeting. We actually made it a program. We made take back a program. And we tracked the amount of staff time and everything that went into it. And that next year, it showed up as a part of this program. Drug, drug take back program, or whatever you call it. And they could have like $10,000 next to it. And some of the members were surprised and said, whoa, wait a second. Why is that $10,000 supposed to be free? Well, no, actually, it takes time, it takes staff times to manage the program. So every day or almost every day, we had a police officer go down for the thing, empty the, empty the box, take it back upstairs. And then once twice a week, a police officer had to shoreline to to where the way. And so all that time, that daily time going and, and picking up the pharmaceuticals, driving from the shoreline. That all takes time and we accounted for that and we costed it. And sure enough, it was $10,000. So that PBB is a, is a great way to show how everything has a cost.
But all of that should have gone away when the city, when the county passed one drug tech back, drug take back ordinance. And two, when the state did it statewide. I mean, that should have gotten rid of that totally.
The pandemic certainly.
Any other?
Oh, yeah, but I mean, Ostrom's has got a drop box. I mean, there's the number of places we can drop bugs, drop drugs for free in, in the, in the city now. Thanks to that state legislation and county legislation.
If I might, that's a perfect example of looking at a program and determining who else is doing this? And who else could do that to relieve us of cost? With those two couple of blocks away, it's like, totally makes sense. That's why we like this.
Okay, I'll ask one more time, Councilmember Chris.
So I had a question on the section four. I think I saw $980,000 for police discretionary training. What's in that? That's almost a million dollars. Section four.
Yeah, quartile four, Joanne.
Four from the bottom.
Oh, I see it, I see it. I'm trying, I'm trying to scan my, my brain because this came up. I, I remember that question coming up. And for the life of me, I cannot explain what happened there.
Hey, I can assure you we're not spending a million.
No, no. And we looked into it six or seven months ago. And I don't remember the resolution. And, you know, maybe during part of otherwise occupied, I can dig back into those because somebody else pointed that out. I remember we looked at it with all the life we cannot remember.
The quartile four number, just about.
Yeah.
Yeah. As you know, we have the police services contract and we struggled with how to build that into the program for this purpose. Should it, the whole contract, the program, or should certain elements of it be programs? And I know that this popped out there and it needs to be resolved.
I, I'd like to know what extras we're paying for with police contract because we're paying close to $4 million right now yearly for the contract. So I would love to know what other things are not included in that contract that we may be paying for as a city.
Well, yeah, there are a number of items. And you know, when we examine the police department budget, you'll see what those other costs are that are not included in the contract. There's always been some additional training, opportunities, equipment, things that they do in the community that aren't covered by the contract, such as some of the dance, sponsoring dances at the but it's not that 900,000.
Are you, are you going to try, Joanne, this evening while we're talking about other things to, or maybe later on, we could get back? You could answer Councilmember's criticism question?
I will do my best.
I don't want to distract you too much during the upcoming discussion because you play a key role in the financial sustainability plan discussion. But we should, I'm making a note in my notes that we should get an answer to that question as well as to the mayor. So I can forward that to you. So any other questions or comments on what we just heard about PBB? Yes, Councilmember Shred.
Yeah, similarly, you know, there's some fairly significant, the drug and alcohol education and the DUI reenactment. I mean, those are also police. So, you know, we've got some significant items in that last quartile that might need to be looked at. If they're still doing DARE, we know that DARE isn't an effective intervention, for example. Oh, and national, yeah, most of those are police, National Night Out, that's also police. But anyway, there's a lot of police in there.
And those are some of the discretionary items that, that are included in the budget outside of the contract. So this would be not only the cost of putting on an event, but also the, the time involved in overtime or police time.
Any other observations now that you're looking at the list of the longer questions? I'm not seeing or hearing any. So you ready to move on? We are running ahead. Let me just, we're at a point, it's 6:42 and we have We are running ahead. Let me just, we're at a point, it's 6:42 and we had thought we would be at the next topic in about 15 minutes from now. So we were scheduled to take a five minute break. So my question is, are you ready to take a break or do you want to just begin with the financial sustainability plan? And it's going to be the biggest topic of the evening. We could maybe take a break somehow during it, but or do you want to take the break now? Should we just keep moving ahead then for the while?
I'm inclined to forge ahead.
Okay. Good. Okay. So let me just set the stage real quickly, although not for long because I'm going to turn it over. We are now talking about the financial sustainability planning process. Rob's going to first give you a review or an overview of the process. And then we're going to call upon Steve Toller of Management Partners, who is the consultant who did so much of the legwork, who laid the foundation in terms of analysis and making recommendations. And then after Steve is finished, we will turn to the members of the task force. There are two who volunteered to speak tonight, but four are here. So when we get to that, I'll make sure to introduce all of them as well as mention to you the names of the people who could not be here this evening. So we have a pretty robust discussion now of this financial sustainability planning process. But Rob, I'm going to turn it to you first. You're on mute, sir.
All right. So as you all know, we maintain a six-year financial forecast and we always have been, at least as long as I've been here, probably longer. And that forecast always looks out the next six years to see how our finances are doing or how we predict them to do. And for the last few years, we've been showing how the lines are going to cross in future years. Expenditures are going to start exceeding revenues. And the forecast that Joanne created last year showed financial lines crossing in 2022. And that's when you all, as the city council, decided to get going on a financial sustainability plan process. Create a financial sustainability plan that's balanced and has our lines not crossing for at least six years. So you authorized me to get a, a task force of Kenmore residents going. We were going to approve their charter late last year. And so we assembled that task force. We also hired management partners to do an independent analysis of our finances. And we needed management partners to help us with mainly two things. One is independently define the problem and see if management partners' problem definition matches up with our problem definition. And number two, give us guidance on possible strategies on balancing the budget for six years. So management partners tasked with two things, helping us to find the problem and helping us with strategies to balance the budget for six years. And so low and behold, management partners independently looked at our books and also concluded that our financial lines are going to cross in 2022 and they confirmed that with you at the January budget retreat. And then he also presented those findings to the task force when they started meeting in January. Once we got the problem defined, we started diving into the city budget. The task force met through January, February, all the way into April. Really diving deeply into the city's finances, what we all do, how everything works, why things cost the way they do, where the money comes from. And we had Jim Reed helping us with that and it was all going great. And the, the task force was scheduled to finalize their recommendations on a plan by, I think by the end of May, if I'm not mistaken, and then guess what happened? The pandemic happened. And initially we thought, well, maybe we can keep meeting, but then we realized quickly that nobody was paying attention to us back in April. The, the public's focus, justifiably so, was on the pandemic. And we realized now would not be a good time for the task force to keep going and, and coming up with the recommendations when something much more major was occupying everybody's attention. So we decided to put the task force on hold. We didn't know for how long. But they, they took May, June, July off. And then we thought, you know, we need to get them back in August. Yes, the pandemic is still happening, but things have kind of leveled off, if that's the right term, probably not the right term, but you know, people had kind of figured out how to deal with the pandemic a little more back in April and May, April, March. And we also realized that the pandemic had made the financial situation worse. You know, or it made the finances, those lines crossing happen even sooner, which made it a little more urgent to deal with. So we got the task force back together. Darlene Ademba, one of the task force members, moved to Bothell, Bothell Stoller, can you believe that? And so we asked Farnell Miller to jump on and, and take Darlene's place. And Farnell willingly did so. She had to do a lot of catching up and she did a great job of that. And she joined the, the task force when they started meeting in August and she's been a great addition. So I think the task forces met a total of, how many times? Eight, nine times, something like that? Like, yeah, yeah. And they've really come together as a group quite nicely and have really thought through things through quite well. And so on August 11th, they met and received Steve Toller's suggested strategies. It was, it was kind of a menu of strategies with different scenarios and Steve will talk about that a little bit later. Steve Toller of Management Partners. And then based on those, then they really rolled up their sleeves, the task force. And on August 24th and 25th, they really had a great discussion on recommendations. And we have task force members here to walk you through that and to tell you about their recommendations. But before they do that, we thought we'd have Steve Toller of Management Partners review the problem definition with you quickly and also kind of walk you quickly through his list of strategies. That'll give you some background. Then what we'll do is we'll take a quick pause and have Joanne walk you through the Balancing Act Community Engagement Tool results. And then the grand finale, the moment you've all been waiting for, the task force recommendations. And you can see all these things in your agenda. So with that, unless you need to take a break, I'll turn it over to Steve Toller to, to quickly give you problem definition and strategies.
Great. Thanks, Rob. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you again. I really wanted to be with you. So that's why I put this background up so I could be in your council chambers. Anyways, last time we all saw one another was back at the end of January or so, when I interviewed all of you. And who knew we would be trendsetters and meeting with each other using Zoom, right? So anyways, I look, it's been great to be working with, with you all, working with your, your staff and with the, the FSC as I've started to call them, the, the, the task force that you've, you've assembled together. So let me share with you tonight a little bit about, you know, kind of what our analysis was and the strategies and scenario packages that we put together. And then I will turn it back over to Joanne to talk a little bit about the Balancing Act before we then turn it back over to the committee to, to share what their recommendations are to you. So I'm sharing the slide deck. I'm assuming by a show of at least one thumb up somewhere that you're seeing this. So great. Thank you very much. So what I'd like to share with you tonight is, is really a, a few things. Firstly is let's talk and remind ourselves, I guess, all of us about what the city's, you know, financial situation was pre-pandemic as well as then post-pandemic and what we are seeing in terms of the short and midterm impacts that this recession may be having on you. We'll talk about the strategies that we identified. We authored a 70-plus page report on that where we did a deep dive into each strategy. I'm not planning on doing that tonight. That could take an hour and a half, two hours to do. I'm going to really just more cover broad brushstrokes. I'm assuming that you've had a chance to, to review the report and I'd be happy to answer any questions on it. And then also talk about the scenario packages because once you've identified individual strategies, then okay, they need to be somehow assembled together to be able to solve the fiscal gap. And so, so we've given you four different, you know, scenario packages, as we called them, where we've picked out various strategies that could solve the, the gap to give you a sense as to, to what those could look like. And those were informative to the, to the task force in terms of their discussions and deliberations of how they came forward with a recommendation to you. And so we'll, we'll, we'll go through those as we go through this. So let's step back a little bit in the wayback machine and go back all the way back to December when I presented to you our review of the forecast that staff had put together, which, you know, for the most part was pretty much spot on. And the charts that you're seeing here on the left, let me just bring up my annotations so that you'll see where I'm pointing a little bit better. As Rob was indicating, did indicate that in about 2022 is when you would start seeing the lines cross, as he said, or what we would know as a, as a deficit starting to occur where expenditures and the general fund and transfers to your streets fund, other funds would exceed your revenue or your, your projected revenue sources. And that gap was expected to grow up to pretty darn close to $2 million by the end of 2026. And if no action were taken, that would ultimately draw your reserve levels down from a starting point of about three and a half million dollars. And would draw them down to zero by 25 and you would be in a, in a, a negative position by the end of 26. But as I indicated at that time, that was assuming basically your current level of, of funding for street programs, which is a really big issue for the city. And I also shared with you that based on the pavement management study that had recently been, been done in 2017. That study had suggested that in order to maintain your PCI, your pavement condition index to the levels that you have if grown accustomed to and want to maintain, it would require an additional investment of about a million and a half dollars. And then all as part of that, and we already know that I-976 was upheld. You'll be likely losing those TBD funds starting next year. And as a result of that, it would further deplete your reserves. And in fact, you're, if you were to fully fund your street program to what the pavement management study indicated. I mean, that would be an additional one and a half million, given the loss with, with the TBD funding. You know, you were looking at, at a gap of growing up to about $4 million. So so that's informative and important to remember in terms of where we were. And also the time I shared.
Steve, I'm really sorry to interrupt. Sometimes you just kind of fade out and I don't know if it's just me or I want to make sure everybody can hear. So I apologize for interrupting, but it's kind of, you're softer than I've heard you speak before.
Okay, I'm already clark pranked up. Is this a little bit better if I'm?
Yeah.
As we say in TV terms, eating the mic. So very good. So, so what, so anyways, so the other thing that I shared with you at the time was that comparatively speaking, when we looked at revenues and expenditures on a per capita basis and knowing that most cities are spending within their means, we look at what the revenue sources were. And as we look at the revenue on a per capita basis that Kenmore brings in compared to other agencies, there's a disparity there. I mean, other than Mill Creek, you know, Kenmore's per capita revenues in 2020, just the one fiscal year, that year, not the biennium period, was around $560 per year, per capita, per person. I mean, your community, whereas you see these other communities, you know, up to Kirkland, which, you know, brings in about $1,100. And of course, each of these communities are structured in different ways. They, they fund their resources in those ways. But when it comes to what are the resources that are available, it's clear that Kenmore doesn't have as much resources on a per person basis as some of these other communities do. The average is about $870 a month and you're about 55, that averages about 55% higher than what your, your per capita revenues were.
Well, Shredik has a question for you, Steve.
Yeah.
Yeah, Steve, thank you for this. And it, you know, the report was amazing. The work that the task force did was amazing. So this is, this is not a, you know, issue of that. But I, I did have a, a little bit of a concern about some of the conclusions you're drawing with the comparable cities. Because really, you know, even in your report, you basically said Mill Creek was the only kind of truly comparable peer. For a, you had kind of a set of criteria that made a, a city a peer. And when, and if you, and if you just look at Mill Creek, our revenues and expenditures are very similar in terms of the general fund and, and per capita. So you know, this is the kind of table that makes me a little squirrely because it makes it seem like, you know, we're somehow behind or not spending in the same way that, that other comparable cities are, when really they're not comparable. So I, I guess I was just wondering, you know, maybe somewhere along the line, we could maybe find another true peer and we could maybe over time kind of look at our revenues and expenditures relative to a couple of cities, Mill Creek and maybe one or two others that are more.
Right. Yeah. Thank you for that. And, and you know, you are unique in some regards as well from the, you know, the comparative data perspective in terms of population and, you know, area.
And that's why I questioned Kirkland. Because Kirkland's at 80,000 and we're at 23. So there, there's some big differences there.
There are, absolutely. And when we had identified those peers, we also worked with staff and tried to understand who, who does, who does a city, who do the people that live in the city think in terms of, you know, what their shared experience is? Who are they comparing themselves to in terms of, well, Kirkland does that or Bothell does that or, you know, Woodville does that? And so we did incorporate more because otherwise we would only have one or two. So you're absolutely right. Take this with a grain of salt, but it is helpful in terms of some of the dialogue that happens with some of the community members of saying, well, you know, why aren't we providing services at X's? And this gives an idea of why that, that might be. So.
I just saw Nigel had his hand up too. Do you want to say something, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah. So a question I had was, we're talking about peer cities. One of the big differences between us and other cities was the average household income. Would there be some way to somehow tie household income in a city to the amount spent per capita? And somehow, somehow use those two pieces of information together to kind of get a more of an apples to apples comparison between cities?
Yeah, that, that's a viable approach. Another viable approach is also taking a look at what is the total? If you look at it from a tax perspective, what is the total tax burden on a, on a household? And how does that measure up to what their household income is? So there, there's a whole variety of different ways to, to, to measure that. Absolutely, Nigel. So.
And Shredik, did you have your hand up again? Did you want to make a comment?
I, I kind of did. Almost all of the cities, with the exception of Mercer Island and SeaTac, and I'm not sure why they were in there. You know, are, are simply our neighbors. So, you know, you could maybe just eliminate those and just call it neighboring cities or something like that. Because the, the idea of them being peers, they're not. And, and so I, I just, I find that difficult as a concept to, it, it just, it makes us feel it, it's, it's comparable in a way that it shouldn't be, I guess.
Okay, good. Okay. So enter the pandemic and what is the, what, what do we believe is the recessionary impact that could, could see? As Rob and Ben Joanna indicated earlier, Rob, Robert indicated that is that the, the revenue impacts have not been as severe as what was originally anticipated, which is great. And in fact, Washington State has recovered from the initial shock of the, of the recession earlier and, and a little bit better than some other states, you know, across the nation. And so that's helpful. And so as we talk about this, we want to, we wanted to revise the forecast to incorporate what the impacts of the pandemic. And part of looking at that. And part of looking at that, I want to acknowledge the work that you all have done and the actions that your staff took with your approval to provide some, some relief, knowing that you were also trying to go down a path of fiscal sustainability and also needing to deal with this short-term issue, short-term midterm issue of this recession. And so staff went, went forward and recommended about $1.1 million of reductions that are shown in this chart here that you're seeing on your screen and a variety of different areas, reducing the investment in street maintenance for just this year, you know, reducing some consulting costs, reducing some expenses related to district services, et cetera, that you're seeing on this list. And, and all of you had, had weighed in on those or informed of those as city manager provided those to you. The 1.1 million that was hit in 2020, 300,000 of that 1.1 million is expected to be ongoing reductions. And so we have incorporated that into a revised forecast with the remainder, the 800,000 or so in 2020 that would assist in that year. Rob, were you trying to say something?
Yeah, um, yeah, thanks Steve for pointing this out. Yeah, I was really proud of my coworkers and, and the city council for helping us make these cuts with only eight months left in the year back in April. Another one I just want to point out, I think that is worth making is the jail budget. Our, our chief police was able to, you know, kind of take the pandemic as an opportunity to renegotiate our arrangement with the, the jail that we use. And, and in 2000, then this year, we think there's going to be a 200,000 plus savings for this year and then ongoing probably in the neighborhood of 140,000 a year in savings. So that's an example of the things my coworkers did to, you know, reduce expenditures.
So we applied those into this, but we also had to make some assumptions about how long we felt that this recession was potentially going to last and how deep would it go? We looked towards the Washington State Economic and Revenue Forecast Council that the state uses in terms of helping under, the state understand what its, you know, long-term projections might look like. And they issued a report about, oh, a couple of months ago or so as the pandemic was, was moving forward in terms of what they forecasted would happen with respect to employment, with respect to personal income and with respect to housing permits and what their expectations were for the long term. And it was anywhere from about a 10 to 20% below what the original expectations were in, in terms of that, you know? And again, unemployment, I think is around the seven plus percent level, which is much better than some other states, which are still grappling with 14 to 16% unemployment. So that's, that's been positive for Washington State, that's for sure. However, the likelihood and the unknown factors in terms of when a vaccine will be available and what impact that will have in terms of eventually starting to release all of these restrictions so that we get back to life as normal, whatever that means. You know, we believe that there's still going to be a prolonged impact as a result of the, of the pandemic. And so as we look and, and project what the different revenue losses could be to the city, and let's face it, in terms of your property tax levy, that's something that the council has the ability to, to determine what that levy is. And you, but you can only increase it up to about 1% per year, systematically, other than tapping into any bank's capacity. And we'll talk about that here in a moment. But, you know, by and large, the, the revenue sources that you have, sales tax is, is, as you know, is fairly elastic or sensitive, economically sensitive to downturns, downturns. And so as we look over the next three or four years, we expect that there, the city could end up having a loss upwards of about three and a half, almost close to three and a half million dollars by 2024. That's top of the year. That's the total cumulative loss that could be expected in terms of sales tax below what was the original forecast. It, it also makes it weigh in terms of, of potential drops in permit fees. I know that Rob shared with you just a minute ago that your permit fees are cracking, at least with what you were making last year, and that's the positive. The question becomes what will the long-term impacts be in terms of, of development activity and permits compared to what was originally expected? And so we're, the, the forecast incorporates in there a concept that we think that you should have in terms of just making sure that you're not being unrealistic, but being conservative in terms of making decisions financially over the next five to six years as you develop your fiscal sustainability plan. And so as a result of that, when we apply those impacts, those revenue impacts to the forecast, it basically would indicate that the actions that you've taken thus far will help you stay above the line in terms of not spending more than what your means are this year. But there is the potential for that continued drawdown in those future years that could end up leading into about a $1.8 million structural gap. And if that were to happen, given the fact that reserves would be depleted sooner than what was originally anticipated, what that basically means is that you would take reserves, again, if no change is made, would basically draw them down to about zero by 25 and it would go negative in 26, which is a year earlier, two years early than what was originally anticipated in the, in the original forecast. And we have extended the forecast out now to 27, assuming that you're going to be making some budgetary decisions in 21 so that we have that six-year period on the horizon. So with a, with, with a gap of this size, it would require about $750,000 in budget strategies beyond what you have already done in terms of that 1.1 million for 20 and then the 300,000 ongoing as, as part of that. And that would need to be done in 2022 and up to about 1.8 million by the time we hit 27 to just eliminate the structural gap. And so we've created some modeling in here in terms of when you look at different strategies, what would it require in terms of, of maintaining your reserves and getting, and making sure that they not just stay above zero, but that they stay at your reserve goal, which is 20% of your annual operating expenditures, which is a very practical and prudent reserve level to have as a target. And so we were definitely, as we indicated back in December, definitely supportive of, of the, of that reserve goal that you're trying to achieve. So, so let me pause there and see if there's any questions before I move on to the strategies.
Steve, let me just jump in and also mention something. So city council on that right graph, do you see this in general fund? It's important for you to know that that's general fund reserves only. So it does not include strategic opportunities fund reserves, which is an unrestricted source of money you can go to. It does not include street fund reserves and it does not include the rainy day fund, which we call strategic reserve fund. So this is just general fund only. We have other funds or reserves or savings accounts or whatever you want to call them. But for the purposes of this and, and to keep it simple, we're looking at the general fund balance here. If you look, if you look at all combined fund balances that have to do with the general fund, so if you look at general fund, strategic opportunities fund, street fund and the rainy day fund, I believe we're in the neighborhood of about nine and a half million dollars in, in reserves that have, that are connected to the general fund. Let me just double check that. Yeah, we're about 9.8 million in $20,20 as far as all, all four of those funds combined.
And, and you could tap into those funds to resolve the, you know, the, the, the gap that you're seeing in terms of the reserves falling below zero or falling below the reserve goal, but it doesn't take care of this issue that you have here on the left-hand side, which is resolving the structural gap. And that's really what our focus was, is ensuring that, that you could still maintain those reserves of, of the things that you wanted to do with your strategic opportunities fund, the so-called rainy day fund as well. But that you also then have the, the, the resources that you need to be able to maintain operations on an ongoing basis. So, so with that, I'm sorry, were there any other questions from council before I move forward with the strategy discussion?
Any questions at all?
Seeing none, I'll move forward, okay?
I'm just gonna say, there's still a little bit of static or something unlike I've ever heard when we've been meeting in the past. So at times it has been just a still bit hard to hear. So I apologize for interrupting, but.
The rest of you are having a hard time hearing from me?
It has been just a little hard. At times it's kind of like a little staticky or kind of a little bit quieter than other people speaking, like I'm comparing just how the sound of Rob's voice coming across compared to yours.
Yeah, Steve, you're kind of, it's like a fluctuating, you're, you're strong and then you're soft, you're strong and you're soft. I don't know if it's your mic or what.
Yeah, I've, I have turned off the concept of automatically adjusting volume. So let me try one more tweak here. Does this help?
Well, right now we're hearing you better than we have.
Okay. Okay, so let's, so let me, let me give that little setting a shot and we will continue to move forward. So, so let's then talk about the different strategies that we identified as part of this. And really it, it goes back to what is fiscal sustainability? Mentioned this in the memo just briefly. It, it, it encompasses looking at different options that would try to maintain service levels to the fullest extent possible. And if those are not viable, then for whatever reason, whether you choose not to move forward with those or whether they don't provide the fiscal impact that was expected, or it's just determined that, that we, we can't move forward with it, the timing is not right to do that, then you would have to look at reducing services. And they really happen in four buckets. It's expenditure controls and cost shifts that really find ways to squeeze the nickel a little bit better and become more cost efficient in the way you're delivering services. Another chance or another option is service delivery alternatives, different ways of providing a service that would be more cost effective, but would still maintain service levels to the fullest extent possible. The third is in the area of revenue enhancements is increasing the, the resources that are available to provide services. And again, the fourth area is service level reductions. The other things that we, we thought about as we identified the strategies and you see that in the, in the report that we provided to you, is we came up with kind of an evaluation matrix that firstly looks at what is the difficulty, the level of difficulty of being able to implement a strategy that factors in things as, you know, the potential for some community pushback, whether there, there's some technical or operational difficulties of implementing those solutions, what the disruptive impact is on the organization, on service delivery as it currently exists and the timing of which those could be done. And we factor that in against what the fiscal impact is. And as we started to do our analysis, there's an extra zero in here, sorry, we looked, we tried to focus on those items that were clearly over 50,000 and really started to look in, in terms of those that were within the, you know, 100,000 and beyond level because of the, the amount, the magnitude of the fiscal impact that is needed to be, to be, to be resolved here. And of course, with this analysis, you know, matrix kind of shows you is, is, you know, pretty straightforward, right? In terms of if there's a strategy that is minimally difficult to implement, pretty straightforward to implement, but it yields high benefit, well, that's your so-called low hanging fruit or in this case would have a high probability of success as opposed to those items that might be under $50,000 and would be a real struggle, you wouldn't want to move forward with something like that. Deborah, yes?
Yes. Go ahead, Councilman Shredik.
Oh, great. So I, I like this conceptually and of course, one would probably want to pick things that, you know, are in the pink, excuse me, are in the, the green. But I, when I got down to evaluating strategies, I found that merging these two concepts of feasibility or difficulty implementing, implementing and the fiscal impact, that merging them wasn't helpful for me to understand them. For example, you know, that the fact that something maybe doesn't generate a lot of money, but is still easy to, to implement, we, we may want to do that, you know? And so I, I just, I, I'm wondering, and I, I don't know whether you got the message about this, but I'm wondering whether there could be a super simple table that just, you know, goes through the 20 strategies, probably breaking down the utility one by the percentage and, you know, the type of utility. And then just along the top, you know, difficulty implementing fiscal impact and percent of the public that was in agreement with them based on the balancing act exercise. And that, that would, maybe I'm the only one, but I would just find that simple table to be really helpful and then we could use our own thought process to weight the, those, those three aspects, the, the fiscal impact, the implementation difficulty and the public consensus.
If, if, if the rest of the council would find that useful, I can provide that to you. Wouldn't be able to provide it to you before eight o'clock tonight, of course. But I could, I could definitely provide that to you if it would be helpful. Will there be any other questions on that? Let's move forward. So again, I don't expect to do a, a deep dive into each strategy, given our time and it will have, you know, conversation and feedback from you about it. But what we did is we, you know, included for you the different strategies. We put them into the categories in terms of expenditure controls and cautious or service delivery alternatives. And the range of, of what you're seeing here on the screen, and again, you have that in your report, looking at the, the potential of, of reducing the city's investment in or the program of the city investing in the school resource officer, looking at how to shift the costs of ball fields and parks lease costs to those that use them, you know, revisiting the city's cost allocation plan to try to ensure that the general fund is, is transferring the monies that it could and should be able to transfer into other funds, given the resources that they have. The different service delivery alternatives again, that you see here on the screen and that we went through, which included, you know, a look at the city's organizational structure, even looking at a, you know, the potential for an alternative jail provider, which would, that's an example of one that could be a good idea, could be something that could be moved forward. But the question is, will it be timely enough to provide the fiscal impact that you need? And that's why we looked at the difficulty and the challenge and, and also what the potential revenue impact was. A couple of other areas that we looked at was in their revenue enhancements and bifurcated those in this chart and in the report, those that the council has the ability to approve by either ordinance or resolution versus those that would require voter approval. And the ones that you see here on the left, which include utility tax, the, the photo traffic enforcement program. And again, the concept there, as you saw in the report, was really one more driven towards providing better roads improvements and safety and having a, a revenue source to be able to invest in those for you. The property tax levy of, of using the bank capacity that you have of about $400,000, you have the ability to, to, to do that yourselves as opposed to a levy lid lift beyond the 1% that you could move forward with each year. That of course would require voter approval under state law, as would implementing a sales tax of, of a 0.2%, which would need to be used for, for specified purpose, particularly road improvement. Even funding or creating a metropolitan park district is an option. But in that case, it's really one of those that would create a separate district, transfer parks maintenance to that district to cover that. And then the question becomes what is the impact on the taxpayer? Because that district is now going to need to have a tax resource to be able to pay for those maintenance costs. And so there's some different options that you have in terms of the revenue side. And then the fourth area is the area. And then the fourth area is the area of budget is is service level reductions. And that would be reducing your investment in in street pavement. That's already lower than what is is really needed. You know, reducing what you're paying for travel meetings and and consulting contracts, recreation coordination activities, et cetera. So all of the different strategies that we identified yielded anywhere between a seven to eight and a half million. Depending on how you would implement those and to what extent you would implement those. The goal here, though, is that the city needs to come up with budget strategies, whether they are expenditure reductions, revenue enhancements. That end up by twenty twenty seven totaling one point eight million dollars. And so as we took these different strategies, we tried to create four different scenarios. Just for your consideration and thought process to as as you start identifying really what the fiscal sustainability plan is that you want to implement. And again, this type of a of an analysis was helpful for the for the task force to see that there's different ways that you could do this, right? You could do them on the left hand side of this chart you see is those that are more revenue centric. Looking to increase the the amount of resources that you have available as a community. And, you know, we we basically gave two different scenarios there. One is is strong revenue enhancements, the second one would provide even additional funding beyond what you're currently, your your current budget is. What your current needs are to ensure that you are able to invest further in road and safety improvements. The third would be more of a balanced approach, it had some revenue strategies in them. Also had a little bit deeper in terms of expenditure reductions there. And then the fourth one would be one where if revenues were an option that you didn't want to pursue or weren't available. Then what would the expenditure reductions look like? And in each of these scenario packages that we created, we designed them in a way with a timing in such a way. That it would ensure that it one made sure that it took care of the structural gap that existed. By the end of that, that two thousand twenty seven. And throughout that period to the fullest extent possible would ensure that reserves were at or at least finishing above. What the target goal was, which is twenty percent of annual operating expenditures. And so, you know, scenario one, again, just as an example, you have an opportunity to read this in the report. Was, you know, a school resource officer elimination. Exercising the bank capacity over a three year period, starting in twenty two. Implementing a utility tax of six percent in in twenty four. And then implementing the fully the BNO tax that you already have, but implementing it to all businesses by two thousand twenty seven. And that's an example of a scenario that would achieve fiscal sustainability to you. The second area was one again, that focused a little bit more on the road and safety improvements. One of those options that really were added here was the photo traffic enforcement. That based on our analysis on what other cities near you were doing and and other cities throughout the state. Basically, for each camera yield somewhere in the neighborhood of just shy of about net six hundred thousand dollars. Implementing three cameras would would generate about, you know, just shy of about one point eight, one point seven million. And so this strategy, this scenario package would implement that starting in twenty two over a two year period. And this strategy, given the other strategies that would be implemented here, would provide some additional capacity for you to be able to invest in your your streets program. Which which could be helpful in trying to achieve what the pavement management study was showing. The third scenario was a more balanced approach that had a blend of some revenue enhancements like the the bank capacity for the tax levy. And looking at, you know, and increasing development services user fees and a utility tax by twenty twenty six to be able to give you that. Sustainability you need and resolving the structural gap at the end period. But also included some changes to the city's organizational structure. Travel and training, reducing those, the school resource officers here, as well as reducing some of the recreation coordinator activities. Again, another type of an approach that had a blend that would still, if implemented. Would be able to achieve the sustainability we're needing. And then the fourth scenario is really one that looks more at expenditure reductions. And so other than exercising the the tax levy bank capacity, starting in twenty three over three years. And some, you know, work in terms of the development services user fees and ensuring that those are at full cost recovery. Everything else in here is really looking at more towards expenditure reductions or reduction of subsidies. One example would 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 be the the ball field park lease that we have at the university. And shifting those costs to those that are using that. And so those again are are different options that this one would be quite expenditure centric. As you saw in our report, we we believe that there's value in in looking at enhancing your revenue. Portfolio, if you will. If you were, if you want to maintain services to the fullest extent possible. And even when we go back to the priority based budgeting that we saw earlier. And we asked a question about, you know, what about this discretionary training? Is that really something that we have the ability to strip off? We were trying to focus on strategies that could be implemented. And took that into consideration, the priority based budgeting approach. But ultimately, needing to move forward with something that would provide that one point eight million dollars per year. Not over a biennial period per year. Really leads us to a conclusion that you, if you're going to maintain services at the levels that you are currently having. Or if you even want to do, you know, some additional services, you're going to need more resources to be able to do that. And so we think that there's some value in in looking at at strategies that incorporate some revenue enhancements to. To to provide those resources to you, so. So with that, let me pause and I'll turn this share off right now, but I can bring up a slide if you need me to, if you have any questions.
Council members have questions of Steve regarding his recommendations or some of the background information he provided? Councilmember Curtis?
I did have a question on city organizational structure change. Didn't exactly understand how Rob is going to mysteriously stir the pot and make things cheaper.
So the 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 strategy that we identified there was to do some shifting. There would be some service level reduction in in certain areas. But what it would look at would be to restructure some of the 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 leadership within the city. Reducing those those costs that are there and eliminating some of those programs. For example, it would, it would mean basically a restructure of how you provide economic development activities right now. You know, the the city manager would have to really be be focusing on those types of efforts. It would have also looked at consolidating your planning function and development services functions together. Under one director position, but you still need, you know, some staff there to be able to to lead and manage both of those those areas. So I don't know if if you want me to go into any more details about what that might look like. Or Rob, did you want to jump in and and your perspectives on that?
Well, you know, so Steve's report was an independent report. There were several things in his strategies that I did not necessarily agree with, but I respected Steve as an independent consultant. And that was one of them where I was having a hard time seeing how that would work. And I expressed that to Steve, but as an independent consultant, he decided to keep that in in his list of strategies or potential strategies.
And it looks like Councilmember Schrempf wants to jump in on this topic.
Just, just a super quick comment, that I don't know whether everybody did see, there are detailed descriptions of each strategy. It was way toward the end of the report. And so I just want to make sure everybody was on the same page with that.
Yeah, I think it takes about fifty percent of the report because they are really detailed.
I lost that whole comment of yours, Deborah.
Oh, I I just said that the detailed descriptions of each strategy are at the end. So you kind of have to, you have, you have to look further to to get the detail. So for the organizational changes, he actually does talk about, you know, shifting particular positions and eliminating particular, you know. So you have to kind of go to that part of the report.
Yeah, thank you.
And Councilmember Marshall, I saw your hand up a minute ago, too.
Yep. And Steve, for the benefit of the public, though it's definitely already covered in there, could you just reiterate what, or if you know. Actually, what would the bank capacity, real property tax increases look like to an average household in Kenmore? Maybe you don't have that, I'm not sure, any estimate on that? And then also, could you briefly outline the utility tax for the public? Does, so let them know if that applies to what, electricity, water, how is that broken down? Thank you.
Right, yeah, the, let me just bring up something for reference here. The 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 bank capacity would, right now, your property taxes are around the four million dollar level. And just let's just round this out, around four million. You have four hundred thousand in bank capacity. And if you were to move forward with exercising that, that would basically increase the property taxes by ten percent. And so if it was done in one shot, it would basically be about a ten percent increase. Of in in property taxes for the average homeowner. As you know, the tax levy is then allocated based on what the assessed value is for each property. And so that could ebb and flow depending on what happens and especially between the commercial and residential side, right? So so in essence, that's what the the impact of of exercising the bank capacity would be. When it, when it came to utility tax, and then I noticed Nigel is wanting to to jump in. The utility tax would basically could apply. And I'm just, give me one second here, I just want to make sure I page this up. In fact, I could even show this if it would be helpful. Actually, I had a slide that I could have showed, but did not show that. So so the utility tax would look at implementing the potential for implementing utility tax for cable. New cable utility tax of about six percent. Increasing the existing electric and gas tax rate from four percent to six percent. And then the potential for imposing a new solid waste tax of of six percent. And that that example of that strategy would yield, based on our estimates, about a million dollars per year of additional revenues. And then we provided some different options and the the table that was shown, it was on page forty three of our report. Starting on page forty three of our report, then talked and showed what some of the other cities are doing in terms of their utility tax rates. And and then what the potential impact could be in each of those areas. So so right now, you're doing electric and gas at four percent. And you have on my phone telecommunications tax of of six percent. But you have nothing when it comes to cable, nothing in the area of water sewer or or stormwater and solid waste. Those are other areas that the city does by state law have the ability to move forward with, if it's so chose.
May Herbert, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, sir, I just feel like I need to clarify something there. When Steve said that we'd be increasing the property tax by ten percent, it's ten percent of the city's portion of a homeowner's property tax. Which is a, what is it, twenty percent of somebody's, city manager might knows this better than I would.
We're about twelve percent of the total property tax bill.
Right, so we'd be increasing twelve percent of their bill by ten percent. So it's really much smaller than than I I just, for the public's sake, wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, and I can, thank you. I could add more detail to that. We're collecting about four and a half million in sale or in property tax. And so four hundred thousand bank capacity would be about eight point eight percent increase. And our our assessed value per thou, or I mean, our our rate per thousand of assessed valuation is a little over a dollar. Right around the dollar per thousand for city rate, that does not include the walkways and waterways bond measure. So if we're about a buck, then a seven hundred thousand dollar house pays seven hundred dollars a year in city property tax. So if you wanted to increase that about by about nine, ten percent, then that's seven hundred and seventy dollars that people would pay. But what you'll learn a little bit later is the task force that are recommending using bank capacity. But phasing phasing it in over several years and not until twenty twenty two. Starting the phase in until twenty twenty two. On utility tax, Councilmember Schrebnik for request, I prepared some graphs that might be helpful. Emailed them to you, I'm happy to show them on the screen really quick, just to see if they help answer Council, yeah, Councilmember Marshall's question. I'm going to put those up really quick. I'm going to do it. So this is a, these are utility tax scenarios on a Kenmore home. And I know it's a lot to to digest in thirty seconds. But I have a typical Kenmore home. Well, that actually happens to be my house, these are my utility tax bills. I have a twenty two hundred square foot home built in the late nineties here in Kenmore. And for what it's worth, I don't know, I don't know if it's typical, but it, my house feels typical. So that's what I put up here, I might be high, I might be low, but. You can see what what like utility tax increases would do on my bill. My monthly bill here for garbage. Can you see my cursor or how it's kind of?
Yes, we can, Rob.
Okay, great. And then, and then here's electric and gas. And while one and two percent, because you're already at four percent and state law only allows you to go to six, so that's why I have that there. You can see what those would do to my monthly bill at my house. And then water and sewer. You can see what they would do on a monthly basis. And with cable. Now, I'm I'm basic cable and that includes, yeah, that that's just basic. And I think it includes internet and phone and things too. So there's that. And then surface water, the annual fee for for every single family home in the city is two hundred and twenty one dollars per year. That's on everybody's home, it doesn't vary per home. And so you can see what an annual utility tax would do on surface water management utility. And then Councilmember Schrebnik also asked for this graph, which also is hopefully very helpful, I think it is. And this is the actual revenue you would get from each percentage point increase of these different taxes. Keeping in mind that on gas and electric, you can only increase by two percent. So. I can keep that up or stop sharing, just wanted you to have that, you have that in your email as well.
Maybe you should keep it up for just a second because Councilmember Schrebnik wanted to ask a question or maybe a reaction.
You want me to put it back?
Sure, it was just a a question about one particular piece. So on the the surface water management and is that the, that's stormwater? I mean, that's the same, we're talking about the same thing, right?
Yes.
My understanding, at least most jurisdictions, are we, we're absolutely sure that it doesn't vary for different property sizes? That's unusual.
I will ask for a lifeline here, I don't know if Richard Sawyer, our surface water manager, is listening in. If we could promote him to panelist. But that's my understanding is your. Is that it's the the rate is the same for all single family homes, it's different for commercial and apartments.
Is that the new fee that we just put in? With a larger property, you pay more, so that's a, that's, it's considered less regressive than the others.
Is it possible to bring Richard, there's Richard?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so to answer your question, so residential lots are all a flat fee, it does not vary based on size. Commercial properties, so multifamily commercial can vary. Commercial properties, so multifamily commercial can vary based on how much impervious area you have and how large the lot is.
Any other questions or comments? And how about any other questions of Steve about his recommendations?
A little historical significance here. On the reduction, on the, on the, uh, gas and electric side of the, of the 4% utility tax worth that back in, uh, 2004. Because we have a fixed income, a large percentage of fixed income in our community. And we are concerned about people having enough heat and enough electricity in their homes during the winter time. So we took the 2% off of that. One of the concerns we had was because of a lot of the rental properties in town. A lot of the apartment houses and rental houses in town. And I think a lot of people don't realize this, but the property owners, the apartment owners, the rental property owners can really set their own utility rates. They can become their own utility company. So whatever the utility company charges, they're free to put their own rate in and bill the, the residents in the community for that. And so we were trying to sort of, um, prevent that and trying to give a lowered rate to people to help them. And as far as the bank capacity, we also felt that it was good to have a, a cushion. In other words, if one of the bridges collapses, if there was some great uh, earthquake in town and some natural disaster, that yes, the state allows us to set aside a rating in Eastbound, but we're only allowed, allowed to set so much money away. But by having bank capacity, where we would be able to draw on that in small increments, uh, granted, but we would still have a resource available to us. So that's why the bank capacity. So I'm a little hesitant to see our bank capacity go away or to increase from those that are needy, um, utility rates.
Any other overall questions and comments? And just to remind you too, that the task force will be coming forward with its recommendation shortly too. Councilmember Curtis?
Just at the highest level, I really feel uncomfortable raising taxes on utilities. Because if somebody makes 50,000 or 250,000, they all have to pay garbage and water and sewer. And I think it weighs more heavily on the lower income people. So I personally would like to find other options than raising utility taxes.
Anybody else? Nigel?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, you know, back in 2014, I think it was when we, uh, raised some of the utility taxes. I was the only vote against, um, doing some of that, uh, because I do have concerns about the regressive nature of it. That said, um, I'm totally fine with taxing cable TV. That's not a utility. That's not something anybody needs. Um, you know, that's a luxury and I'm, I'm fine taxing that. And I lost my train of thought. Sorry, the smoke is getting to my brain. A little fuzzy right now, but, um, yeah, I just wanted to, oh, and as far as bank capacity goes, I think if we, if there was a time for us to use it, this is the time to use it. We're, we're facing, um, kind of a once in a lifetime convergence of our lines crossing plus COVID. You know, we need to use the tools that we have at hand, uh, and I think, you know, the, especially what the, uh, task force recommended, where it's coming in over a couple of years. I th- I think that makes a lot of sense, um, to help us address our shortfalls, keep our service levels where, uh, our citizens want and, um, and do it in echo, and as equitable, equitable of a way that we can with the blunt tools that we have.
Um, we are now one hour away from finishing this discussion. And we're about an hour and 45 minutes away from a journey in the meeting. I'm wondering, you've done such great listening, and now you're making a number of comments. Should we take a break at this point before Joanne comes on, or should we, okay, you're all kind of saying yes. So what I'm proposing a five minute break. So it is 7:47. We would come back at 7:52. We then hear Joanne, because she has some interesting report to give you on the, um, balancing act, the public sentiments. And then we return to, uh, our task force, and four of them are here tonight. So let's just take five minutes and come back at 7:52. And I'll start kind of warning you to come back in about four minutes. I don't know that anyone can hear me, but it's 7:51. We are expecting to reconvene in about one minute. Okay, it's 7:52. We're set to reconvene. I'm looking to see if all the council members have made it back yet, but not quite. I think I see four of you here, folks.
Hey Jim, um, after Joanne gives her, um, summary of the balancing act results, I'd like to take just like two minutes to, uh, talk about process moving forward before we turn it over to the task force.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we can move ahead. 7:53. We see six of the council members. But why don't we go ahead? So Joanne, if you're ready, let's start.
Okay, I'm ready. I assume I'm.
And here's Councilmember Marshall.
Coming across loud and clear here.
You are.
Good. Thank you. Good evening, you know, council, task force, and anyone watching tonight. My little bit part in tonight's, um, program is to share with you the, one of the elements that, uh, we brought into the, uh, financial sustainability plan process for community engagement. You all along that community input should be an important element of this process. And part of that is, is illustrated by our illustrious task force membership. But we also wanted to hear from the community in general, which is, um, not something that we, we generally done in either budget preparation or, um, any of this, uh, balancing process or forecasting process. So the one element that, um, I wanted to share with you was the balancing act tool that we had discovered last year. And with technology being the primary communication tool now, it was perfect for this circumstance because we couldn't have our coffee and cookies and open house like we would traditionally want to do. But we did have this great tool that people could, um, uh, participate in from the comfort of their home or office. So I hope that you all did have a chance to review and work your way through, uh, the simulation. Oh, you know what I'm not doing? I'm not sharing my screen. Here we go. We're going to do that now. Share. Okay. Do you see the title page, 2020 Financial Sustainability Plan?
It's up in front of us.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. And just as a reminder, uh, here is a, um, just a screenshot of what that balancing act tool looked like as people accessed it from our city webpage. We posted it on our financial sustainability task force page, and there was a link so that people could access this simulation. And we presented it in such a way that it tied back to Management Partners' forecast for 2021, 2022, which estimated a, a combined two-year deficit of $972,000. So this is where people had to begin to work through the simulation. And because we wanted to make it manageable and fun and not burdensome, we didn't even consider trying to include every line item or every category of revenue and expenditure. We just wanted people to, uh, work through it in a way that they could provide input. We gave them some yes and no questions, scenarios. We gave them some opportunities to increase or decrease certain revenues or expenditures. And in all cases, folks had a opportunity to comment on any category or subcategory that was included in the simulation. And the simulation would only accept a submittal that was balanced. In other words, people could not submit a simulation that was out of balance or showed a deficit. So, uh, it was a bit of work for them. And on this page, I wanted to share with you that in the simulation from the period that we had it online from August 11th to the 24th, which was when the task force met, there were 856 page views. In other words, that many people went on and looked at different various, um, elements of that tool. Each participant spent an average of 16 minutes on the site. And 232 submissions were completed, which I think was really outstanding. I don't think we could have received a result like that in a survey of any kind. So I was really happy to see that, um, this was, uh, seemed to have some value for, for the community. We gathered some demographics in the balancing act tool. We asked for age, and this is that distribution. And we asked for a gender breakdown. It's all pretty, pretty, um, evenly split, actually. And there was an opportunity to, um, have a pin drop for the location of the users that were doing, uh, participating in the tool, which I thought was kind of fun. And you'd expect most of them to be congregated in Kenmore. And I found out who, who was down here in Fremont, and that was Adam, our intern. And I thought that was really funny that, um, he did it from, from Fremont and it showed up on our map. And I also have to, it reminds me to credit Adam for helping me create this PowerPoint. He was, um, he really went into the balancing tool for me and helped extract some of the elements so that I could share them with you tonight.
Councilmember Marshall has a comment or question.
Who is an LFP?
I don't know. I don't know. This is based on IP addresses. But I only know because Adam one day said, hey, that's me down there. So as far as, um, comments submitted, and I, and I mentioned that in every element of, of this, uh, simulation, people could leave a comment. I counted them up, and I only counted them once and counted them quickly. But I came up with 385 individual comments that were submitted across all those categories of revenues and expenditures. And I just thought that was astounding. And I have provided those to you, uh, in advance of this meeting. And in fact, the folks at Balancing Act said that was the highest rate of comments they had ever seen. So
Yeah, and that's like, they've, they've, uh, they've helped City of Tacoma, City of Denver.
Yeah, they said it was, um, right up there with like the City of Milwaukee. So I thought it was important for the council and the task force to see all the comments, which is why I sent them out ahead of time too. I think it illustrates that, um, there's some pent up, pent up desire to participate and to learn and to provide input to the budgeting process, even if, you know, um, this is a self-selected group of, of folks. And it's not in any way statistically, um, valid or has any statistical meaning whatsoever. But I really love the fact that people seem to get into it and really provide well-thought-out questions and comments. So we asked them, um, you know, to consider various revenue and expenditure options in various scenarios, either an expenditure reduction area of revenue enhancements or balances of revenue enhancements and expenditure reductions. Some of the strategies that we created a scenario for, we took from the Management Partners' report, but not all. Um, in some, in some cases, we just wanted to, uh, throw out a topic of interest that we had been considering internally to get some input on it as well. So it's not all-inclusive, every strategy. Um, and it does include some things that were not even thought of in the strategy that Management Partners presented. So this first graph, um, is an outcome of the revenue budget submissions. And I have to tell you, at this point, this gets a little confusing. People could go in and look at the simulation and submit a balanced simulation in the end. Or they could go in and click around and say, oh, I think we should lower taxes. I'll click that. Or I think we should, um, increase human services and click, I'll put an increase for that. But if they don't submit a balanced simulation in the end and they just leave it, they're discounted as clicks. And so I haven't put as much emphasis on reporting what those clicks are in these graphs because, um, in the end, they don't show that someone was able to balance, um, the revenues and expenditures. So that's why they're grayed out here. This chart shows, what this is the zero axis, the average submission increase in the tax category of all the submissions that category of all the submissions that were calculated. And we didn't ask folks to provide really any input on fees or intergovernmental, they're just either too complex or outside our control. And then there was the other category. So you can see that the average tax simulations showed an increase of over $400,000. And then the dot is the median submission increase, which means it's the middle value of all the values that were submitted. That's the middle value for taxes and this is the middle value for other. And we look at the same thing on the expense side and going back, though, you can see that in no case were any of the revenue options decreased. None of the submissions included decreases. I thought that was interesting.
When on revenue submissions, if you can click back on other, the biggest item under other, I believe, was the photo enforcement. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct. Yes. And I think, believe they had an option of what would one camera generate? And I think that's what this value is. So same theory on the expenses. Here, here's the zero axis. These are the big expenditure categories, general government, police services, and public works. And the average submission decreased general government between 100 and 150K, police services over 400K, and this is public works. And then the median submission are these dots. So this is kind of a really high-level overview and it doesn't include any of the clicks. It's just the balance submissions. Here's another summary of the data, the top revenue and expense increases and decreases. So this top section is all, has to do with revenue. So where folks increased revenues, they increased them most in the tax area and then in other, which was the photo enforcement. And where folks decreased revenue, it would be here, but there were no submissions that included those. Same thing for expenses down here. Where expenses were increased, public works received the biggest average increase, followed by general government and police service. Where expenses were decreased, police services was the largest submission, followed by general government and public works. So what I have for you here are just some of the scenario questions and the data that, just an extraction of some of the data that went with them. And for instance, one scenario question we asked about was the 0.2% local sales tax for, for transportation and should the city ask voters to approve that? Here were several of the comments, pro and con. Forty-eight submittals said yes, which was 20%. And the average increase computed out of their responses was $111,000. Expanding admissions tax was another question that we threw into the submission. Again, these are the responses and these are the submittals. So in this case, forty, forty-nine or so folks submitted yes. Some said 1% increase at 1%, 3%, 5%. And the average amounted to $32,000. BNO tax was another item that we asked about because currently the city does not assess a BNO tax on retail services and other businesses. So that's some capacity that we had. 23% submitted a yes response on that with an average suggested increase of $115,000. And here you have a couple of those comments. Cable utility tax, which would be a new tax. We asked the question, should the city assess a utility tax of up to 6% on cable? And how much it might generate for each 1%? So we gave folks an option to vote on a 2%, 4% or 6%. And these are the numbers of people that submitted that. And here are a couple of comments. And bank capacity. We talk about, about every year with our bank capacity being about 400,000. We asked, what about increasing the property tax by 1% and using 1% of that bank capacity or 2%? And 38 folks submitted yes responses with these percentages, average increase 23,000. And here are a couple of comments regarding that. And this has been a topic of conversation tonight, increasing the electric and gas utility tax from 4% to 6%. And only 19 submittals were a yes. And there were a number of comments about that. And of course, there were, you know, we also asked about, let's see, surface water tax, solid waste tax and others. But if I went through all of them tonight, I'd take up the whole, the whole meeting and I don't want to take away any more than I have to from the task force, so the council. We did put in a climate action plan question that wasn't in Management Partner Strategies, but we wanted to ask about that. We had 48 participants submitting yes to this question and of course, plenty of comments. We asked about shifting the cost of the faster ball fields to the users. Eighty-two submitted a yes response to that and there were a number of comments for and against. School resource officer always up for consideration and we, should the city continue the program? And what does it cost? And what does the school district grant versus 439 folks submitted a yes response? And of course, again, there were pro and con comments. And last but not least, we presented the photo enforcement option for traffic safety and should we implement this in school zones or red light areas, what it might generate annually? And 66 folks submitted yes for one camera. That was about 28% and the average increase on that was the $379,000. And of course, you can imagine this generated many comments as well. Steve Tolliver was kind enough to help me put these next few charts together. So in the, on the revenue questions that we ask, these were the revenue enhancements that were included in order of the most favored option. So you can see how people, how those stacked up in people's views, in the community's views with photo enforcement being the most favored option, utility tax being the least. And then these are zero because we did not provide an option for that. In questions that were reductions of expense, this is the order of the most favored options as well, which is a bit surprising with events all the way down to street maintenance being the least favorite option and events being the most. And the last chart is where there were questions regarding additions to expenditures in the submissions. This is the order of the most favored option. And I didn't mention mental health resources previously tonight, but that was a question we posed, which would put a mental health specialist or increase our participation in the radar program in police patrol and, in order to beef up that, that element of public safety. So that was the most favored option under additions to expenses. And you can see how those stack up. So that completes this very brief look at the balancing act tool. And I really just want to close by saying before I take any questions, that I really think folks responded well to this. It wasn't perfect. Not everybody thought it was great. They wanted more detail, more opportunity to dig into other areas. But I think it could certainly be improved on going forward in the future. I think it's one really fun element for people to use to learn more about balancing the budget and what our actual revenues and expenditure restrictions are. So I hope that we can improve and move this forward as we go into our future bienniums. So be happy to take any questions about this or respond to any more information that you might need.
Councilmember Curtis.
I really enjoyed using the program and I'm usually not a computer guy. So, so, so this is above and beyond. And I think it showed that there's a lot of interest in our city, in the budget. And in years past, it was like, you know, from our citizens, barely anybody would show up at all of our budget meetings. So I think it did, one of the things we wanted to is get citizen interest and get their input. And whether we use it all or not, I don't think as, as necessarily as important as the fact they're engaged, they cared. And I did notice it was way easier to balance the budget by raising taxes than by cutting expenses.
Thank you. I totally agree.
Anybody else have any observations, reactions, questions? Councilmember Shrubnik.
Joanne, it would, I, for some reason, I don't see where the PowerPoint is in our agenda. Maybe it's an attachment that I can't get to because the report that was in the agenda didn't have these wonderful graphs that are at the end of your presentation and I would really love to have those.
Well, I apologize for that. I prepared this to be my talking points for tonight. I just finished it earlier today and I'm going to put it on the website with the other documents to go with the agenda so everyone can look at it. Thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
What would be one of the main examples of the admissions fees or tax events at St. Everett State Parks?
No, we were thinking of entertainment venues or recreational venues. So we have an admissions tax provision in our code right now and specifically to allow us to charge an admissions tax for a theater because one time or another, a theater was envisioned probably either downtown or out at Lake Point. But we're looking at potentially the golf course. And if we were ever to have a performing arts center in Kenmore that charged admission for those performances, that would be a potential source of tax as well.
And I apologize, bowling alley?
Oh, that's, that's a possibility.
I'm not suggesting it, but I was just wondering.
Tell me, Steve, did we, did we look at the bowling alley?
Yes, we included in our analysis both golf course and bowling alley as two options.
Two options, right.
Broad concept of entertainment venue is, as Joanna indicated, but really those are the two primary that stick out today.
Correct. Not, not park admissions or anything like that. No, just entertainment.
No.
Any other comments or questions? Tippy Demea Herbert.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I really enjoyed the tool and I appreciate staff finding this tool and putting it out there. I thought it was really interesting to take, to look at. And it was a good piece of outreach. It's good to see kind of what the public is thinking in general. But I just thought it was a really interesting tool to kind of play around with a little bit also. So thank you for taking the initiative and doing that.
Great. Thank you.
Joanne deserves some credit or your community does too because she told us more clearly at one of the meetings that the higher per capita response from Kenmore residents than places like Phoenix and Milwaukee and Denver, much, much larger cities. So, and apparently the people at the sponsors at the company are thrilled by the results that they saw in Newcastle. So good job, Joanne.
Councilmember Curtis had a question.
Yeah. The right place for it, but I had a question on internet services. Is that where would the tax be? I guess I don't want to tax internet services because people need it to work, they need it for school. Is that under cable TV or where exactly would that fit? Or can it be separated from other cable-related things?
Well, my understanding is we can't tax internet services at all.
Oh, good.
Isn't that correct, Steve and Rob?
That's correct. That's prohibited by federal law.
Right. So, you know, that's a huge untapped resource out there, but not one that we can tap into.
Thank you.
Yes.
But if I could just do a side editorial on that, that's an example of our economy changing and our tax structure staying in the 20th century.
I think that's one reason we see our, our telephone and cell phone utility tax dropping off too, because we can only tax the voice portion, not the data portions of those services.
So can tax streaming services, though. And we're actually able to collect sales tax and other things from, from streaming services.
So what are we looking at the golf course for?
It's, well, we look at it under the scenario of an admissions tax.
Okay.
Let's call for any comments or reactions. Councilmember Marshall.
Yeah, and I apologize on that, on a hypothetical admissions tax for, say, the golf course. How is, how is that tax imposed then? Is it, how is it, how is it imposed, I guess?
Yeah, it, it, really it's imposed on green fees and also cart usage. And it's basically the use of the amenities. It does not apply to any food service that might happen at a, you know, the bar grill, you know, the 19th hole, if you will. But it does get imposed for any green fees, range balls, if there was a tennis court on there, use of that. And then in terms of membership, what happens is that there needs to be an attribution and an allocation of what are those membership costs are, are related to the use of the facilities versus the use of the 19th hole. And so that's where cities and golf courses then get into conversations with one another about how to split out those member revenues.
And public or private?
Correct. Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Shall we move on then? And I think Rob wanted the floor next. Before we go to the task force.
All right, yeah. So I know you're, we're so close to the moment you've all been waiting for, but just one comment about process. So tonight you will hear the recommendations of the task force and you'll, you'll be able to ask questions and provide feedback. You don't have to vote on a final plan tonight. What you can do is you can give me some kind of high-level direction tonight based on what you heard. And then I'll come back probably by the end of October with a final six-year plan for you to adopt. So I just, I just want you to know, you don't feel like you have to make a decision and decide on a plan tonight. You can provide some general feedback based on what you've heard from the task force and then direct me to come back with you to, for a final plan in October.
Thank you. So with that, I would like to introduce the task force members to you. I just want to say one thing about how impressive they are. A little while ago, Rob just casually mentioned to you that they were called back after a four-month hiatus to work in August. Imagine this, if we were all French, nobody would come back to work on the task force during the month of August, but they put in nine hours of work just in meetings, let alone all the additional work they did to look through documents and your budget and everything. So they were incredibly dedicated. And we had four members of the task force here tonight. You met one, Frenelle Miller, but she's had to leave. Jeff Pooley from the task force, Elizabeth Spring volunteered at our last meeting to present to you tonight, but also Lynn Swagstrass here, and she's one of the leaders of the task force, too. And so all three of them, I think, will be able to present to you and answer your questions. So with that, I think I'm going to turn it to Elizabeth first.
Hi, thanks for having me. I just want to say personally that it was a real honor for me to serve on this and it was very eye-opening to be involved in city government, something I've never done before. And I learned a tremendous amount about how our city is run. And great job. Thank you. So I'm just going to introduce a couple points that were important to us as we were working through this process. And then Jeff has some additional data that he's going to share and show you that he worked on during one of our meetings that was a really helpful visual tool to get us all aligned on the same page on how we're going to present this information to you. So we accomplished the task that we had set out to do to make recommendations to have a balanced budget through 2026. However, we did recognize that Kenmore's revenues do not grow in line with expenses, causing the annual surplus to decrease over time. Therefore, the city will likely be in the same position in 2027. Therefore, the city will likely be in the same position in 2027. We set out to find ways to increase revenue rather than reduce services, as it seemed that in most cases, reduction in services would have a disproportionate impact to the community. For example, recreation coordination staff or would end up costing the city more in the long run, like road maintenance. And we accomplished this. We did not use all of the tools available to us to increase revenue. I eat something like the Levy lid lift. So there are more options available to the city in the future as all of them have not been exhausted. Secondly, at first glance, and while using the balancing act tool, it seems the city is heavy on staff. After much discussion and learning with Rob, Joanne and Steve, the city of Kenmore is staffed quite lean, particularly when compared to other cities. Through our months of meetings, it became apparent how vital each of the city's employees is cities employees is to ensure our city is run well, the efficiency of the staff, and in some cases, the multiple roles people take on. We worked hard to refrain from recommending regressive taxes. The photo enforcement recommendation in strategic areas will provide revenue enhancement, but placed strategically will improve road safety. We have recommended these funds to be used to maintain and improve our road and pavement and not be funneled directly into the general fund. Post pandemic, when people are not going, when people are going back to offices, the camera recommended on 522 will impact drivers that do not reside in Kenmore, thus sharing the cost to maintain our roads with non residents. And finally, one of the most important areas to the task force was to, was to ensure that any increase in taxes did not disproportionately affect low income families or families experiencing hardship in the current economic climate. Additionally, we are asking that tax increases take place on a scaled rollout as not take effect at once. This approach will result in dipping into reserves for the next three few years before returning to a surplus. Those are the remarks that we had discussed to talk about. And I think Jeff, you have some data to share with the, with the council.
Yes, absolutely. I also want to, while I'm pulling up my screen here to show you how we kind of worked on this, I want to echo some of Elizabeth's comments that this was really enlightening for me. I really enjoyed serving on, on the task force and learned a lot. And one of the things that I noticed when we went through the comments from the balancing act was that many of the comments that I saw in the balancing act from citizens were comments that I had thought of initially when first reviewing the budgets. And then after learning more about the spirit, the specifics and the nuance and asking questions, you know, some of those initial reactions were changed over time. So it's been a very enlightening experience to serve on the task force. So that brings me to, I want to show you this, this spreadsheet. It's a matrix that we used to kind of come together and turn our individual thoughts and feelings and impressions into numbers that translate into a proposed, you know, and suggestion for the forecast budget. So I just want to walk you through some of these columns. We focused on the, the items that were created by management partners and their, their presentation. We discussed many things and often the things that we would come up with, there were legal or other restrictions that, that made them not options. And the management partners set of options seem to be a very, pretty, pretty comprehensive as far as everything that we could think of as, as far as options for the city. So we have the item numbers. These correspond to the numbers in the, the management partners report plus a few additional, a few additional items. For example, we added this additional HR person that we had discussed with Rob. As, as part of their staffing needs. So this was not in Steve's report, but we decided to add it anyway, because we thought that it was important. But these other numbers, the lower numbers correspond to Steve's report. The type is we categorize things in revenues, expenditure controls or shifts, and then other initiatives. Just to give you the category, the title, these are, are either the title or just a short description of the item in question. The fiscal impact and full of success. And again, these are, we tried to correspond these to the, the management partners report as much as we could. Some of these were arranged and we just selected a number for purposes of, of visual and for the matrix. So some of these may have a range depending on selections. But these are the numbers that we were using for our decision making. And then here in these columns, columns F through K, we added these scores by each individual task force member. And I've, I've included a little legend here up in the corner. It's a four point scale. Kind of one through three being options that we would consider. The top score was three. This is an option that we would suggest as pursuing as a priority. Number two is this is pursue as a secondary priority or maybe dedicate fewer resources to pursuing that, those options. And number one is this is something that we would consider, but really pursue as a last resort because it, it doesn't necessarily align with some of the values that we set out, you know, such as those that, that Elizabeth discussed, such as regressive taxes or putting an undue burden on low income families. And the zero are just those that we would either, we didn't expect would have a worthwhile impact, not worth the resources, or does not represent the values of the city in our opinion. So we went through and we scored each of the options that we considered using this scoring, took an average, rounded the average and when we got, when we went through that exercise, we found that by using just those items that we scored as a number three or on average rounding, rounding average. So the 2.5 score is rounded up to a three. With these options, we were able to come up with a, a scenario budget that met the goal of of having a net surplus over the, over the next seven years. And just one of the things that we wanted to point out specifically, the two things that, that Elizabeth also alluded to a little bit. So number one, we are planning this in a phased approach. And that's, that's actually the columns here, column N right here. This says that the, this is when we are proposing to to phase, to start. So for example, this number six for seek alternative jail providers, we didn't expect that that would be feasible in the near term, but we would hope that it would be feasible in later terms. So we set a goal to have that implemented by 2024 and would take one year to implement. Others, we can start in 2022, but would phase it in over the course of three years. And so with, with that phasing, we elected to sort of represent a deficit in 2021 and 2022 just to not come out of the gate, putting, putting tremendous burden on our citizens, increasing the property tax by 10% right out of the gate. We thought that phasing in that approach, particularly given the economic circumstances and the pandemic and, and things was prudent and that you, using some of the, the, the the surplus that we've seen over the previous years and rainy day funds over the next few years was something appropriate. And then for the following years, we, we do project a surplus based on these elections. But then as Elizabeth said, these, the surplus does decline over time. So the, the lines would cross potentially again sometime in 2020 or 2028. As a result of many of the, the strategies that, that we're implementing do not grow as fast as, as expenditures. Expenditures are projected to grow at 3%, whereas many of these such as, you know, the cable, cable television, a utility tax on cable television, that's not a growing industry. We don't expect that to continue to grow. We have limitations on property tax increases, those kinds of things. They, those, those revenues do not grow at the same rate as expenses. So but we did, we, we elected to leave it as is, as, you know, seven years from now. We don't know what it's going to look like. We could see some great, you know, the, the council has put into place some really great plans to, to attract commercial businesses and growth. So we could have a different economic climate at that point. And, and so we thought it would be more prudent to kind of set this plan for the next seven years for the, for the scope in line that we were set up to, to look at and then, and then kind of reevaluate as we get closer to the, the next, the next phase there. So I will stop there. Oh, and one last thing, I will say that there are some notes that, that I typed up as we were kind of discussing some of the, for example, when we were talking about photo enhancement, there were some specific comments from individual members about where we would like to see that and that it would and that we would want to focus on or that that money should all go to public safety. And then some individual comments from individual task force members are, are included in Excel comments in the boxes that they correspond to. So I will leave it there and are there any questions about the matrix or any questions about the task force broadly? That you'd like to ask?
Well, Jeff, how about Lynn? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but did you want to say something as the other task force member who's here this evening?
Well, sure. I actually don't have much to add. I want to say that Jeff and Elizabeth did an excellent job summarizing it and kind of talking about the goals that we were trying to accomplish and the, the principles that we were using with which to filter the different ideas and options. I do just have to echo their thanks as well. It was really great working with Rob and Joanne. They were incredibly patient, answered all of our questions and provided endless amounts of information. And I guess I would also say that the task force really worked hard. These were smart, capable people with incredible insight. And I, I hope that the information provided is helpful. And thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you all. So councilmembers, echoing Rob, do you have any kind of higher level questions, reactions, any observations or comments, anything even about their process as well as some of the recommendations? Councilmember File.
Yes, I just was going to say, I really appreciate this tool. I found it very helpful to follow and travel along with the task force when I was watching online. And I really appreciate the, the opportunity to be able to use this forward. So thank you for all your hard work and your effort. It's really appreciated. And I, I want to just hands down, thank everybody for all your time. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shrubnik, did you have your hand up too?
Yeah, just also want to echo what folks said. I mean, you guys were amazing. Councilmember File and I were both on the night of your final deliberations and you guys were amazing. And this grid was amazing. Actually, one of my questions is, is, is it, I, I did not, again, maybe I'm having trouble finding things. I didn't see it in one of our documents. I don't know whether it could be something that could be sent. So that was, that was one of my questions, but the other, you know, and my, you know, as you were going through this, it totally made sense. And I was like, yeah, the traffic cameras, that totally makes sense. And, you know, it distributes it to folks that aren't even residents in our city. But one of the public, the only public comment tonight made me wonder whether we, whether you or Steve or, or anybody presented any information about their actual impact on safety. I think we're assuming that they have a positive impact on safety. I know when I got a ticket based on one of these cameras, it definitely changed my behavior. So from a personal experience, I think it can, but I don't know if there's any data about that.
Nigel, did you want to jump in? Do you have like an answer to that?
I'm not sure about an answer to that. What I would say is that the data I've seen, it depends if you're looking at red light cameras versus speeding cameras. The red light cameras generally will turn T bone collisions into into fender benders and, you know, rear end collisions, which is safer. Cause your cars are made to take that sort of collision better than a T bone. And what I've seen, and I would need to dig around a bit, it's been a while since I've looked at the data, because we looked at this as a council probably three years ago. There was some data saying that, that it did increase safety and lower overall speeds. We were looking primarily at the speed camera over by Arrowhead. That was our best candidate at the time. And I was in favor of doing it back then. Because I think especially around schools, kids need to be able to, to get to and from school safely. I was never looking at, at the traffic cameras as a revenue source. I was looking at them from a safety perspective and I thought that they would be a good investment for us years ago. Overall, I want to say I really appreciate all the work that the task force put in this. This is incredibly thoughtful. This is above and beyond what I was expecting to get from, from, from a task force. And other than maybe the admissions tax and maybe the solid waste increase, I don't really have any quibbles with what's being proposed here. I'm generally supportive of, of what's being presented here. I think it's very thoughtful. I think it's again, using the blunt tools we have, trying to make things as as not regressive as possible. I don't want to say we're making anything progressive here, but trying to make things as not regressive as we can with kind of the inadequate tools forgiven by the state. And I do appreciate the investments in streets. I don't really think that that's a huge safety issue, but I think it's a I think it's a infrastructure issue. You know, it's right now, we essentially own a house and we're only painting it every 30 years instead of every 10. And that causes damage to the rest of the house. You know, our streets are one of the biggest things that we've spent money on as a city, as far as capital infrastructure goes and doing preventive maintenance, which is something we're woefully underdoing right now, will save us a lot of money in the long run. It's way cheaper to do early fixes and preventive maintenance than it is to go through and redo a chunk of road because it's failed to the point where it's not fixable anymore. So I, I really appreciate seeing that money found and dedicated, because I think that is something that's going to save us a lot of money. You know, over the long, you know, 20, 30 year window, that's going to save us a lot, a lot of money. But again, thank you for all your work. This is a, you know, this is great stuff and I look forward to chewing on it for the next couple of months as we finish up the budget, but thank you so much.
And Rob, I saw that you had jumped, wanted to jump in.
Well, would it be helpful to show the report summary so that you can see the task force recommendations just kind of all by themselves there on the report summary? I can share that screen if that's helpful.
I have, I have it right here. Yeah, I think it's the page four where we just took that matrix Jeff had developed and kind of pared it down to the recommendations.
Bigger at all. There we go.
Just to add a couple of comments on the photo enhancement, since that seems to be one, one point of, of lively discussion. I, we, we went back and forth on whether we thought that that was a a worthwhile thing to do, both from a public safety perspective and a revenue perspective. And when we discussed the specific intersections and the specific roadways that were, that were being proposed specifically 61st and 522, that intersection has a lot of, I know my, personally, my family, we cross that street regularly to go to, to the park down there. And there's a lot of bus traffic from people getting on and off the bus. And, and it's, it's a very easy intersection to, to try to, you know, catch a yellow or things like that and pose that safety. And so just from thinking about my experience with that, we, we thought that that would be a good candidate that would actually would improve public safety as well as we did consider the two elementary schools that we do see pretty high speeds and, and any speed reduction that we would see as a result of cameras, we thought would be positive impact to, to road safety there.
Other council member comments or questions? So you know, you can maybe see these the recommendations just by themselves. And this is again for the category number one. Councilmember Curtis.
I just want to comment that I really appreciated the spreadsheet to take a huge amount of data and to make it somewhat objective, instead of just all squishy and everybody's got an idea. So I really appreciate that extra effort that you're. So I really appreciate that extra effort that you're, that the team did.
I just want to jump in. That was all Jeff. He did that on the fly in one of the meetings. He made this whole thing that night. It was incredibly impressive. So we are there very thankful for his help on that as well.
I do have a process question. At what point do you want specific thoughts like on this list in front of us? Which ones we support and which ones we don't?
Yeah, I was hoping
It feels like we're asking high level questions.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping to get your reactions on these tonight. That way I can have some kind of direction on what to bring back to in October.
May I just start? And I think I can be really, really quick. So on the number one property tax, I honestly don't think we need to delay it as much as 22. We could have raised this tax 10 or 12 years ago. So one way to look at is people haven't been taxed. And it's a, you know, I don't not saying the full, you know, 4%, but people, we've saved them money for a decade by not charging those taxes. We are now in need between coronavirus and the tax problems, we need the money now. So I I would, I in favor of that one, and I would not even delay it. I would do it sooner than later. Admission taxes, I thought that was clever, hadn't even thought of it. User fees, again, great idea, small amount, but fine. Cable TV, I see that as a luxury, as long as basic internet is available, and I understand we can't tax it. New utility tax on solid waste. Again, to me, that feels regressive. I might go for 2%, but honestly, everybody needs garbage, no matter how poor you are. And so I'm really not in favor of, you know, doing much tax in that area. Jail, great idea, it'll take time. Photo enhancement. Three to four cameras. And I guess what we studied several years ago showed there really wasn't that much of a problem in school zones. People aren't speeding, there's not accidents. So I would rather see it all on 522. 61st is a really dangerous corner. 73rd is also, it kind of has that funny slant back and all the people get off the bus and they come across and you can barely see. And then there's a lot of people taking California turns to go west on 522, a lot of near accidents at that corner. So I would rather focus on safety where there's a lot of people and cars. I I don't think we actually would create much safety by putting it in school zones. And I like the idea of funding, street funding. I like the idea of adding to the radar program. And I'm not in favor of hiring any extra FTEs. And I don't know if anywhere in here we talk about removing the FTE for the event coordinator. But but I'm I'm inclined to not hire more people. And then the other thing to cut costs, I think that a lot of those things on the page four PBB, some of those, a lot of them related to events that I think if we cut it, it wouldn't be a big loss and it would save us some money. So that's my quick rundown.
Other council members have some reactions, want to provide give your kind of preliminary direction or some of your thoughts? Councilmember Marshall?
Yeah, I I do think that we should, meaning the city should still continue to fund the Bastier baseball field leases. And that's just based upon the need that I think had been demonstrated by the Little League. I think it's a different situation for sure than this whole St. Edward's issue. And I think that we ought to continue to contribute to that. So I would not like to see that shifted to the others in terms of Bastier ball field leases.
And Councilmember Schrempf?
Just going through this list, I'll kind of do what Milton did. On the bank capacity, I I would still like to reserve some of this. You know, maybe taking it in half. And particularly given that we've renegotiated the jail fees contract, you know, maybe that could make up for that other 200,000. I think the tax on recreation, that's fine. Fee study, yeah, that's fine. I don't think the ball field thing actually made it to their top group, but the new utility tax on cable, that's fine with me. I would agree with Councilmember Curtis on the solid waste, that's regressive. So I wouldn't be in favor of that. Alternative jail providers, you bet. And the photo enforcement, I yeah, I I think where that's done is key. And if we know, for example, where our accidents are and where our you know, speeding is, you know, those would be, those would be the areas. And certainly 61st seems like a likely candidate, 73rd. I would venture to say we've got a lot of issues relatively near Inglemore on Simons. We've had a fatality not too far from there. We've also had a fatality on money to drive not too far from the school zone by Arrowhead. So I I I would, you know, potentially look at those areas, but maybe you've already looked at them. So that would be the feedback on that, but it has to be tied to safety. And sure, eliminate funding for school resource officers, that's already happening.
Councilmember File?
Well, similarly, you know, I, I'm going to follow suit pretty closely. The, I support the property tax levy, bank capacity. The recreation, entertainment, yes. The study, yes. The tax on cable TV, yes. The utility tax on solid waste, absolutely. I would do a little earlier. The heaviest wear and tear on our roads is garbage. And there are equitable plans that can be utilized. So doing some work with researching with MRSC. Seeking jail alternatives providers, absolutely. The traffic enforcement enhancement, yes. 522, 73rd, 61st, I would say yes. I know the, we've done a lot of, or will have a lot of improvements done on money to drive. But I do recognize what Councilmember Schrempf is saying about Simmons Road. And she has a very viable point there. Absolutely. North Shore has already taken action this year on the school resource officer. They're not paying for school resource officer time. But I do know that those programs that happen in schools come from that line. And from that school resource officer. So I hope we can find a way to work with our, our public service providers to continue to work on engagement. Yeah, we, we don't need to have police in schools. The street funding, we needed to maintain our roads. Human service, yes, we do need a person to fulfill this role. It's going to be very necessary. Radar program, yes. There was, thing about human resource, pardon me, human resources or social services that was mentioned in part of the review. We might look at forming a coalition with our surrounding city partners to add social services or behavioral health services. That would be one way to share the cost burden. And I do support Bastier University ball fields. After attending the AWC budget and financial sustainability meeting, review. Other cities had worked with their ball leagues to secure grants and help fund those fields. So there's a way to decrease our city costs by working together with our ball leagues. I'd like to see what we can do there with that relationship. So thank you for all your hard work on this.
Councilmember Okane, did you have any comments you want to make about these recommendations?
Yes, I I wanted to synthesize a bit before making comment. I I'm generally in favor with the proposed strategies. I am so genuinely appreciative of the time and commitment that the committee, the task force put into this effort and the quality of work that they brought forward. The only piece that I would like to see, and this, this is just something that's not listed in the other strategies of interest, and I think is incredibly important, is investment in our climate initiative, especially given what we can see today, which are the blazing fires taking over the entire West Coast. I think that it's incredibly important that we don't take the eye off the prize in the midst of the pandemic, that one of the greatest threats to our, our community, the world, our economy, all of these things is climate change. And so making sure that we maintain and increase our investment in environmental stewardship and climate action is incredibly important. And something that I would like to see our city invest in and be strongly committed to, especially given the beautiful and wonderful natural habitat that that we have here in the city of Kenmore. So that's the only, that's the only thing that I would like to see. And it might take some creativity to get there, but I have a feeling there's a way for us to to find the funds to do that. And sometimes something that's got such a long term benefit, like the investment in climate action and climate strategies. It's really hard to understand that investment upfront right now, especially maybe from the places, medium sized city. It's incredibly important and we need to be leaders there. There's, there's just no question that this is what, what is important. I know it didn't rise on the, as high as I I would have foreseen. But we, as a council, need to genuinely look at the big picture here and invest in climate. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'm looking at the mayor and deputy mayor. Gentlemen, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Yes, my hand has been raised for for a little while. Yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned for the seniors in our community. One of the things is people on fixed income, when they, when they experience $100 a year, there's a number of people that end up homeless. They can't afford their homes anymore. And I really don't want to see that happen. We have a number of seniors in our community that are on fixed incomes. And I really don't want to do anything to, to harm them. And I'm afraid increases in property taxes are more than the 1% is going to do that. I I am very, very concerned. And you can say, well, they qualify for property tax relief. Yes, in fact, they do, but I know my mother, for one, would never do that. She did not believe in, in using the system to to help her. She believed in going in on her own. And I think that's something that I've grown up with. And I just don't, I know that while I served on the, on the Affordable Housing Task Force in King County as co-chair, that was one of the things that was made very, very clear. There's a number of seniors that do lose their homes when you have increases, substantial increases in property tax. So I'm very, very concerned about that. And I remain very concerned about that.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Herbert?
Yeah, I said most of what I wanted to say earlier, but I do want to support what Councilmember Okane said. I would like us to find a way to continue the work that we started this year on climate. And one more, one thing I meant to say earlier and slipped my mind, as long as I've been on council, the lines have always been crossing two or three years out. The idea of seeing a plan where the lines are crossing out in seven years is mind boggling and really is a testament to the work and to the work done by the task force, because I've never seen lines that far out. It's it would really put us in a, in a great place for the next few years to be able to, you know, focus on governing rather than, you know, constantly trying to rejigger the budget a little bit to get us another year. So again, thank you to everybody who worked on this because I've never seen seven years out like that. It's, it's a, it's a majestic thing to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert asked for your initial direction and comments base that he can then take all of this in. I don't know, Robert, do you want to, oh, Councilmember Chris, go ahead, please.
And one other question, Councilmember File has mentioned a tax on water bottles. Was that discussed at all by your task force?
I, we, we found out that we can't do it in Washington State.
Okay. And then
Didn't Seattle do that? Didn't Seattle tax water bottles?
No.
No, they tax soda.
And then just another minor issue, the drug return, medicine return box. I assume we'll stop that program. Back when we did it, we were like the only people in Kenmore. It was a big help, but now that it's so, so widely available, I think we can stop doing it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I did miss something. I do support a BNO tax. Why I don't support BNO tax for micro businesses, small home based businesses, I do support a BNO tax for Kenmore. And something we might phase in 20, in 2023, 2024. Yeah, I think that it were for more than time to do so. And I do support funding environment and climate and diversity and equity. So I would want to continue to see that sort of a investment forward. And you know, on this list, but part of another discussion is whether or not we become a metropolitan park city. I would like to district, I, I would like to have us consider that. I do have one concern with the possibility of dropping the drug box program that we have is that it's, it's a well utilized box program disposal. We might look to shifting that to our fire department possibly. But in looking at our police report, it's just very clear that drug abuse and use is still a high portion of their response. And it doesn't, I don't know that there are plenty of alternatives for disposal in our city. So I would, I would really want us to be cognizant that we do have a drug problem in Kenmore. And it's seen and validated in our police and fire and aid response. And we do have a well utilized disposal program. And it's not for the lack of you know, a problem that doesn't exist is very much a problem that does exist. And it's better that it's disposed of properly versus in the garbage and filtering into our land and water. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Schrempf?
Yeah, sorry, I was just going through this list when I made my comment. But yeah, I do, I would like to clearly continue with the climate action work and that will require some funding that isn't represented here. And I concur with Councilmember Curtis that I would look very carefully at some of those tier four or, or, I don't remember, the priority based budgeting, the category four things, particularly the drug and alcohol education pieces, which are really not appropriate to come from the city. That's a, that's a health curriculum issue. I'm guessing it's already in there. They do it much better than we would or the police would. It's, you know, you've got some low hanging fruit there, at least 350,000.
Jeff, go ahead.
I I did want to point out to to the council here that we, we had to draw a line
we, we had to draw a line for purposes of presenting a scenario. But we did, I did want to point out that we have these lower categories that, you know, some of the task force members, for example, I believe, yeah, so the, the, the local sales tax rate dedicated to transportation. You know, many of us were in favor of that. The, the water, storm water, there were, you know, there were mixed feelings about certain of these things. So, so this, you know, we, we, we did our work and we had our own individual thoughts and feelings about each of these. And we're presenting them to you and you all bring years of experience working with the city that, that we do, we're not able to get in our, our limited number of meetings and, and time spent digging into the budget. So I, not that you would be, expect that we would be offended or take that into consideration, but, but, but we thought about this, that, that, you know, we're, we're presenting our, our best step forward, but we recognize that, that, that there are other considerations that we did not anticipate. And we would hope that you bring those to the table and, and certainly not and, and kind of look at this in the context that it is. And, and, and put the work in that, that is needed from our leaders. So.
Based on what I'm hearing from the council, I, I think I have the direction I need to come back to you guys in October with a financial sustainability plan that you can adopt in final form. It'll probably be a little different from the task force recommendations, but, but not a whole lot different. So thank you. I think I, I think I, I've been taking notes and I think I have what I need.
I've taken notes too. So, okay. Well, thank you, Steve and Jeff, Elizabeth Lynn. Thank you all very much.
Can I say thank you too? I, I do want to publicly thank the task force. What an amazing group of people. They were so patient with us. They asked amazing questions. And I just love the, the diverse background that they have, you know. Elizabeth is, she's one of the owners of the Sea Plane Restaurant, you know, and, and Lynn is the Parks and Rec Director for the City of Kirkland. And Jeff is an accountant CPA, doing a complex work for some big firm. And I can talk about the others, the, the ones that are here, I just mentioned, but anyway, thank you so much. I wish we could have paid you for all your work, but thank you for volunteering and giving so much of your time and energy and skills to this. One of the most, if not the most rewarding citizen committee task force groups I've ever worked with. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, I did have just one thing. I just have been so impressed with the level of civic engagement that has taken place here. The welcome that our city brought into our community to help prepare this incredible financial sustainability plan. I, I just am so impressed. Your voice, your commitment matters and it gives us the keys to move in the right direction for our community. So you know, we need more of this throughout our country and I just really love seeing it happening here in Kenmore. So thank you so much for your leadership and participation. So thank you.
It's nine oh five. I'm going to turn it over to you, Rob, because I think you wanted to walk through the steps in the budget process.
Well, you know, I don't think I need to. I think it's pretty self explanatory. You know, we'll be presenting a budget to you in October and I'm right on a parallel track. At the same time, we'll be presenting the financial sustainability plan in its final, final form to you for you to adopt in October as well. So unless there's any questions about that calendar that's in your pack at the budget calendar, I'm ready to call it a night.
Okay, so just a reminder, we have council meetings on the fourteenth, the twenty first and the twenty eighth of the month. And if there's no further business to come in front of us, this meeting is adjourned.
Have a good night.